And the safety of our community...
It's up to you to pick it up!
Last year, more than 70 people died while crossing the street in Nevada. Don't become part of the procession. Make smart choices when you're walking, and cross the road safely.
Are you saying tonight we can meet up and study together?
Just text me off, sir.
Okay. No!
There is no text, tweet, or call that's worth a life.
One pedestrian death is one too many.
Look up.
And look out for each other.
Council meeting of the City of Sparks for, what is it, October 12, 2015, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Hi, here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, please, from Pastor Pete Bossler, Crosswinds Assembly of God Church. Welcome, Pastor, how are you?
Let's pray. Lord, obviously by how many people are here, there is some, oh, concerning things that people want to talk about. But I pray, as always, that you give the mayor and the city council great wisdom. And that good things come in this meeting. I pray for the police department, the fire department, those that protect us and serve, that you would just let them have a great rest of this year. And we want to thank you for the City of Sparks, thank you for your blessings, and by the way, let it rain. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please, Mr. Lawson, would you lead us?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have public comment. If you want to speak under public comment, please fill out one of these cards and bring it up. I think I only have one right now, and that's Ardina Perry.
Are you coming?
Come on up.
Oh, I'm here.
You're it.
First time he's been able to read my writing.
Well, I couldn't read it, I just knew it was you, that's all.
You're so sweet. For the record, Ardina Perry, City of Sparks. I'll try to read this in a timely fashion, that way I don't wander. I am here today to object to the proposed ordinance to allow urban agriculture inclusive of chickens and bees, addressing firsts to rights and desires of existing landowners who purchase property in good faith. Many would not have purchased had Sparks embraced inclusive zoning. Inclusive zoning does work if you start with it in the master plan stage. The language implies a community garden which will be maintained on land not necessarily owned by the farmer. I have extensive background in farming, and I am aware that food crops require different protocols than traditional landscape gardening, from herbicides to pesticides to composting. I do not feel this is a compatible use with the smaller lots in the City of Sparks in close proximity to other residential areas. I saw no provision to prevent runoff from the watershed. To be fair, we don't do that with land either. However, the equipment used in community gardens will be larger than what would be used on a small plot in one's personal backyard garden. There is a noise and dust factor not compatible with urban lifestyle, but let's not forget that many of these farmers will not be residents in the direct area where the farming will occur. Residents should not be forced to accept this type of zoning change in an established neighborhood that will negatively impact property values. I have no objection to it being considered in newer neighborhoods. Please be aware that more people do not want to live next door to chickens than do want to live next door to them. I receive calls from home business operations, many daycares and elder care homes who have concern with chicken and bees being on budding property and affecting their business. It should be obvious if one wants to farm, one should move to the farm, not to expect the urban core to change to meet their needs. Casino and commercial use are put along materials not in the middle of a ranch. Urban agriculture with or without chickens and bees is not a well-thought-out plan and will not particularly discriminate against our older communities not protected by CCNRs. Did I make it? By golly, God bless Sparks and God love America!
Thanks, Ardina, and then I have another letter here that you want entered into the record, and I will do that. Okay, anyone else under public comment?
I would like to make a public comment in support of chickens.
Pardon me?
I'd like to make a public comment in support of chickens.
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to do it under the agenda item?
I can do it now.
Okay, come on up, and then you can fill out a card later, just give us your name for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chelsea Curran. And I live in Sparks, and I work in Reno, Nevada. I'm the Director of Marketing at a local accounting firm. I'm on the board of an organization called the Holland Project, which is an all-ages art and music youth initiative. And I'm also on the board of the Tahoe Chamber Music Society, just as an introduction for myself. I didn't get a chance to prepare a full letter, but I did pull an article that I really found engaging, and I thought that you would like to hear. And it's called "The Seven False Myths About Urban Chickens", and it's by Patricia Forman, who is an author, a pharmacist, a Purdue graduate, and a supporter and advocate for urban agriculture. So myth one: chickens carry diseases communicable to humans. The truth is that small flocks have literally no risk of avian flu transmission to humans. The 2006 Green Report states, "When it comes to bird flu, diverse small-scale poultry is the solution, not the problem." Myth two: chickens are too noisy. Fact: laying hens at their loudest have about the same decibel level as human conversation, 60 to 70 decibels. Hens are so quiet that there have been cases of family flocks being kept for years without the next-door neighbors even knowing it. So it'd probably be best if they did it legally. To sound noises a concern with roosters and their predon heralding of sunnieses, I'm not an advocate of having roosters within city limits because they're really loud. Myth number three: waste and odor. A fact: a 40-pound dog generates more solid waste than 10 chickens. To be more specific, one 40-pound dog generates about 3/4 of a pound of poop every day. 10 chickens generate about 2/3 of daily poop. So your dog is louder, and it poops more than 10 chickens. Myth number four: chickens attract predators, pests, and rodents. Fact: predators and rodents are already living in urban areas. Wild bird feeders, pet food gardens, fish ponds, bird baths, trash waiting to be collected, all attract raccoons, foxes, rodents, and flies. Modern microflock coops such as chicken tractor, arcs, and other pens are ways of keeping and managing family flocks that eliminate concerns about predators, rodents, and other pests. They like to eat those bugs. Myth number five: property values will decrease. Fact: there's not one single documented case that we know of about a next-door family flock that has decreased the value of real estate. On the contrary, local foods and Living Green is so fashionable that some realtors and home sellers are offering a free chicken coop with every sale, because it's nice to know where your food comes from, and it's nice to have chickens. There's nothing better than spending a Sunday afternoon and watching your friends' weird chickens with a beer in the backyard. Myth number six: coops are ugly. Fact: microflock coop designs can be totally charming, upscale, and even whimsical. Some of them are architect-designed and cost thousands of dollars. Common design features include blending in with the local architectural style, matching the slope of the roof, and complementing color schemes. For examples, go to mypetchicken.com. And myth number seven: what will neighbors think? Fact: you can't control what anyone thinks, much less your neighbor. Once folks gain more experience with the advantages and charms of chickens, most prejudice and fear evaporates, especially when you share some of those fresh, heart-healthy, good-for-you eggs from your family flock. And I also heard that there was concern about chickens and children, which is kind of crazy.
Okay, you need to wrap it up.
Oh, okay, well then, then I'm done.
You can leave that with the clerk, and she will enter it all into the record.
Perfect, I can email it to you all, too.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on. Approval of the agenda is...anyone want to take anything out of order? If not looking for a motion to approve the agenda, Ms. Ratty.
Ms. Joffrey.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further questions?
I just have a question.
No.
Do we need to do anything?
Yeah.
Approval of the agenda to talk about the 6 o'clock time certain for the one agenda item.
You know, that's a good question. Looks like we're going to adjourn, and then re-adjourn with a roll call and everything, so I think we'll be okay. Chad, any problem, DC?
No, it's agenda is for an adjournment. You're free to adjourn as long as you publicize the time you're going to return.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure in case there is any confusion. If anybody is here for...
Good idea.
If anybody is here for a feral cat discussion, that will happen at 6 o'clock tonight. If you're here for chickens, bees, agriculture, you're in the right place. Thank you.
Good job, thank you. Anyone else seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. It's like going to school, making sure you're in the right class. Okay, good. Number six, six point consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Spark City Council concurrent meeting of September 21, 2015, and the regular Spark City Council meeting on September 28, 2015. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Looking for a motion, Mr. Smith?
Moved to approve.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Bybee, to approve the concurrent meeting of September 21, the minutes, and the regular meeting of September 28. Any questions? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Schmidt? Passage unanimously, thank you. Okay, let's move on to 7.1 proclamation, International Walk to School Day. Is there someone here to receive this?
Yes, sir.
Should've known, come on down.
Good afternoon, mayday, council members.
Let me read this, and then I'll give it to you, and then you can make a comment, if I can shut my phone off here, dear, I'm sorry. Just wonder that's not Ron Smith calling me. He usually tries to pull fast on me like that, but it's okay. All right, let me read the proclamation. Whereas school travel by private family vehicle for students grades K through 12 accounted for 10% to 14% of all automobile trips made during the morning peak period in the past, and 2% to 3% of the total annual trips made by family vehicles in the United States. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an elder...at an early age...elderly is meaning, not... At an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. Those are all things I have, so take a lesson, start early, and do some physical activity, please. Whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety, and its benefits related to health and environment. And whereas walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routines. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 7, 2015, as International Walk to School Day in Sparks, and encourage citizens of Sparks, Nevada, to walk or bicycle with their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year. Thank you.
I am Officer MJ Cloud, and I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator. I put together a very quick slideshow for you. In 2009 is when the Safe Routes to School started here in the Reno-Sparks area, Washoe County. We started out with four schools, and we've now doubled our size in any of the events we have going on. As the mayor read off, the benefits are starting physical activity, teaching the safety pedestrian to children. It's not only for the students, but it's also to make awareness for how walkable and how bikeable the community is for the people who are walking with them. And it addresses the concerns that people have for the environment, reducing traffic congestion, pollution, and reducing speed. Being able to plan events like sharing, like walking to school events is sharing time with the community leaders. Having them come and walk with the students, the parents, and the staff from a certain school brings the community together. It's a proactive event. Even though we are doing this presentation after the 7th, the key is, we're going to celebrate this all year long. So the day that we present to the council members what we've done and the actual celebration of the walk wouldn't matter if it were today or if it were last month. It's a reminder, just to reminisce on how great it is to walk, and the simplicity of enjoying being outside, starting your day off in the right direction. If you have any questions about your Safe Routes to School program, if you have any questions on how you can get involved with one of the schools that are in your area, please contact me. We have events all year long, and I'd love to have any of you join any of our schools. Thank you again, sir.
Could you read those numbers again out loud, those phone numbers to reach you and your name, please?
I can. I'm Officer MJ Cloud, and I'm located up at Ninth...up at Ninth Street and at the Washoe County School District Administration Building. My cell is 762-7991, and at my desk it is 333-3782. My email is with the washoeschools.net server, mcloud@washoeschools.net.
Questions? Thank you, dear, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great afternoon.
You, too. Okay, next we have a proclamation, "Keeping the Lights On After School". Is there someone here who...okay, Tracy, good. Okay, whereas the citizens of the state of Nevada stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills; support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends; build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults; and engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas the state of Nevada has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas "Lights On After School", the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 22, 2015, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. Whereas 19.4 million families report that they would enroll their children in an after-school program if one were available. Whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. Whereas the City of Sparks is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Now therefore I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 22, 2015, as "Lights On After School Day", and in further resolve that the City of Sparks endorses "Lights On After School", and commits our city to encourage innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school. Thank you. You can clap now.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. My name is Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. I want to thank you for your ongoing support. We do provide for and after-school programming in 15 school sites here in Sparks. And the good news is, our numbers are going through the roof right now. We've usually sat between 800 and 1,000 emergency forms on file. We have gone over 1,500 this year. So we're serving more children. The challenge this year is keeping up with them and keeping enough staff on to keep all these kids in a good, safe place. But I couldn't do it without your support, thank you.
You know, Tracy, I have personal knowledge of the after-school program. My stepson went to Sepulveda, and it talked in there in the proclamation about the after-school program and how good it is with the children and making them responsible adults. Well, I can speak to that, too, because he's now in the Navy, and he's serving a four-year term. He's now in Guam. So I know it brings the best out in young kids, so it's a great program. And you know, keep going with it, make sure we always have it, it's a wonderful program. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Ratty.
And I think that's fantastic, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge we haven't had an opportunity to talk about it, and I'm not sure that there will be another opportunity. We lost a 13-year-old boy in our greater community to a drive-by shooting recently. And sometimes when we have that kind of an incident, you know, obviously the grief and everything, the reaction goes to law enforcement, and certainly law enforcement plays a very important role. But the important work is keeping kids out of the pipeline, right? There'll be a never-ending job for law enforcement if we don't do the prevention work up front. So I do think that this is incredibly important. I'm thrilled to hear that the numbers are growing again, because we kind of took a hit during the recession. But anything that we can do to continue to be proactive, please bring us ideas forward, because there is a growing problem in our community, and we need to figure out how to address it.
Yeah, I didn't realize that that happened. Did you know the young man's name or anything, do you?
They're not being real public with his name. There's a lot of fundraising going around number 99, because he was a member of a sports team under that number. But it's been a while since we've seen someone that young killed in that type of violence. And you know, it's youth gangs and some of the...there's other opportunities. If we don't keep the lights on and provide a place for kids to go, there are other opportunities where they'll find acceptance and belonging. And so it's just critically important work, and I'm glad you're in charge, because I know you do a great job, and if there's more that we need to be doing, let's hear about it.
Thanks for telling us, Angie, and maybe we could have just a moment of silence for the young man that passed away, please. Thank you, thank you, Tracy, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I saw the kids up there with their stuff. So here we go with the presentation, Dilworth STEM Middle School, 7th and 8th Grade High Performers. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Nice to see you again in another meeting. Kathy Cluett, the City Manager's Office, Senior Admin Analyst. This is Beth Whalen. She is one of the main drivers for the Dilworth STEM Middle School projects that they do all year long. Today we have the 7th and 8th Grade winners. This all just came about on Friday, so it's very, very new for them. The 7th Grade studied the body systems, and the 8th Grade studied water, what's the matter. The 7th Grade, they actually had UNR students that came, and they had the Challenger Dome, and Beth and the kids can explain what that is. And the 8th Graders, actually, some of them did go to Tom Wharf, and some of them went to the marina and did testing with the lab technicians from Tom Wharf. So we do get involved with the water, what's the matter. And with that, I'll let Beth take it from there.
Good afternoon, I'm Beth Whalen, and I, like she said, I'm the STEM Coordinator at Dilworth. And we just wrapped up our STEM units. And here to present what our students did for 7th Grade is Kiana Ramirez and Silali Lopez. They're going to talk about the bodies.
Beth, one thing, could you tell us what STEM stands for?
I'm sure there's people... Yes, sorry, STEM is Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math.
Thank you.
And Dilworth became a STEM Academy five years ago. So we've been evolving our STEM projects.
Great. Okay, who's first?
We're here.
Don't be bashful, I know you're not. Be sure to give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Kiana Ramirez-Angelar.
And my name is Silali Denise Lopez.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Kiana.
And I'm Silali. Today we'll be talking about the nervous system. The nervous system is...the nervous system controls most of your body and sends signals to it. Some organs that are in the bodies, in our body system, which is the nervous system, are the brain, the spinal cord, the nerves, and the sense organs. The brain is the commander of the body, and it controls most of the body. The spinal cord sends signals from the brain to the body and vice versa. The nerves detect the environment and help us react like stimuli.
In the nervous system, we have two special parts. One is named the central nervous system and the peripheral...
The peripheral system. The central nervous system includes the nerves in the brain and the spinal cord. The peripheral nervous system is the nervous system outside the brain and spinal cord, and also consists of the nerves. The signals are created in the brain. Then the signals go to the spinal cord, which sends them to the nerves. Finally, the nerves give the signal to the rest of the body, telling it what to do or what not to do. Now, we are going to talk about interconnectivity.
One of the interconnectivity was the muscular. The muscular is interconnected with the nervous system. The nervous system sends signs to the muscular system, so we could have the ability to move.
And another way that the nervous system is interconnected with another system is by the skeletal system. The skeletal system provides protection to the brain, because with the skull, the brain will be protected. And we all know that the brain is very fragile but important. And now we are going to talk about our disease that... And now we are going to talk about our disease that we studied. It is brain tumors. And I'm not talking about a specific brain tumor. I'm talking about brain tumors in general. A brain tumor is a mass of cells that are not normal in the brain. And there are two types of brain tumors. They are primary brain tumor and secondary brain tumor. Primary brain tumors start and stay in the brain. Secondary brain tumors start somewhere else and eventually are spread into the brain. Some treatments for brain tumors include surgery, gamma knife therapy, and other types of therapy. Some symptoms are headaches, seizures, memory problems, balance problems, speech problems, and personality changes. And here in our board, we have some images of the healthy brain, which are these two, and a brain with a tumor, which we have two images, one on that side and one here. Also, having a brain tumor can cost a lot of money. Brain tumors can cost from $50,000 through $700,000. And the probability of getting a brain tumor, it's very small. It is 0.002 and a whole bunch of other numbers. And then, as you can see here, we have made a game board. It's called the Evil Brain Game. And it has the probability of getting the brain tumor and how much it would cost. We also made a story about the brain tumor. And it is basically how the body combined with medicine helped so it could take off the brain tumor. And here we have a little model of a skeleton. And here we have our nerves. It's not really neat, but we tried. We have our nerves and the spinal cord in which we open the skull up, we have a brain. Thank you for your time and we hope you liked our presentation.
Thank you, I think it's very nice.
Thank you.
Kiana, you remembered a lot of that stuff. By heart without...
They've been working very hard.
Yeah, that was very good. Good memory.
So now it's going to be the 8th grade and they learn all about water, where water comes from, how it's cleaned, how it's filtered. So they are going to put their hat to you.
Okay, we need all your names, first of all. You have to tell us your names, okay?
I'm Andrew Tully.
I'm Emma Hernandez.
I'm Bellin Romi.
I'm Julia Jones.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Bellin and I will be presenting our task in Ailway for Quarter 1 STEM. We had to come up with a three... A protagonist and an antagonist. And we also had to create a plot diagram that included a rising action, climax, a conflict, a falling action, and a resolution. And of course for that, we created these plot diagrams. And we read a narrative story in our class.
In math, this portion I'm going to be doing, and in math we have these water drills. And it's basically like we had to track, we had to track our water usage over the course of five days a week, school week. And we'd have to tell each time we washed our hands, we flushed the toilet, we'd take a 10-minute shower. And so we had to add all of them up. And you would times it by this column number, which is the estimated amount of gallons used. So whenever you times it, you'd get this number in this column, which is the total. And we added all of them up and got that number. And we had to make a proposal letter so we could reduce our water by 10%. And by that, it's like taking less, like less long showers and like doing less laundry, buying less clothes, so that you don't have to do as much laundry. Wash your cars in certain days, wash your lawns in certain days.
I'm betting the girls use more water than the boys. What do you think? Yeah. First of all, they probably take more showers and the boys don't do laundry, do they? Didn't think so yet.
Easy, easy.
Ivan and I will be doing the research and development half. In research and development, which is our summer study class, we had to make a map of where our water comes from. So we have Lake Toto, which goes up through the Truckee River to Donovan Lake. And then past that is Crostwood Reservoir, Bogut, and Stampede. And past that is Independence. If it goes the other way, it goes through Reno Sparks where it's treated at the Truckee Metals Water Reclamation Facility, where it's distributed throughout the homes. And then past that, it goes up to Pyramid Lake, or it goes down past Derby Dam to Le Haunman Valley. And then we have our, how our filters work, like the filters in your refrigerators or your sinks. So what it does is it goes in through this, to this big chamber, and it goes inside of the filter that's on the inside and gets all of your big stuff out, like rocks and dirt. And then inside of there is another filter where it filters out all of your viruses and bacteria, giving you your clean water.
So like water rights are like people's authority to take and use water from a river. So like the most of the Truckee Metals Water Authority gets their water from the Truckee River. And they're required to take a specific small amount of water from the chowls, so to test. And each arc equals 325,851 gallons of water a year. And here we have a graphic, which like it goes from evaporation to condensation and transportation from like trees. And then precipitation, which like rain is flowing down to the water.
Also in science, we had to explain why it's important to filter out each of these contaminants. And it's important to filter out chlorine because chlorine may cause you to get bone cancer and it's one of the chemicals that may damage a lot of rivers and lakes. And it's also important to filter out nitrate because it may affect certain young adults and children, but it may affect more the infants if they have nitrate in their milk. And finally, it's really important to filter out phosphate because even though it has calcium, it can still affect people that have diabetes. And if you consume phosphate, it's important if you use less than .3 in your water.
In science, we had to make a filter that could filter out these three contaminants. When we started, we had a chlorine and nitrate level of zero and a phosphate level of two. And when we filtered it through our filter, it gave us a level of zero chlorine, nitrate, and phosphate, and a final pH level of seven. pH is a scale that ranges from 0 to 14 with 0 being acidic and 14 being alkaline. And 7 is neutral, which is the type of water that we drink. And the part of this filter that we, that took out most of our chemical, most of the chemical, was our rock and sand layer. And the active carbon finished off the job.
So one contaminant that was a reminder was phosphate, which when we tried to filter it, it was cleaner than before. Phosphate comes from animal waste and sewage, which could cause like, you know, health problems. So when we filtered it, it went through different layers. It ended up through the cheesecloth and then it was less contaminated. So you could see like, there's like...
Well, thank you very much. That was good. You know, I won't speak for Mr. Smith. He and I sit on the Truckee Metals Water Authority Board of Directors. I won't speak for him, but I finally learned what I'm doing there on that board of directors. So thank you very much for that information. I appreciate it. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of questions I'd like to ask the two young ladies from the 7th Grade class studying the body and the nervous system. Come on down. You don't have to be nervous. Come on down.
Talking about the nervous system.
The nervous system. Don't be nervous about the nervous system. Just a quick question and comment. In the medical field, you know what they call doctors that deal with the nervous system? Either neurologist or if a surgery is a neurosurgeon. And in the year 2029, that's how long it is, I see two young ladies that are going to be neurosurgeons and neurologists. And I very, you did an excellent job with those programs. Both groups did an excellent job with it. I'd be honored if I'm still around to come to your graduation ceremony at Medical School. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Ms. Byby.
I just want to thank, I want to thank the students for coming and for, I didn't realize until right after I was elected and you first brought some of your STEM students here. I mean, Dilworth is right here and I had no idea you were a STEM Academy. And I love that. And every presentation you brought to us is just a shining example of a really good program and a really good future for us. And I learned something from both groups. So keep up the good work. Keep working hard. Look forward to seeing you up at the university and back, giving back to our community. But great, great job and I love, I love the program.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to 7.4 presentation, The Role of the Red Cross in Responding to Disasters and Emergencies. There she is. How are you? Welcome. Just give us your name for the record, please.
Well, thank you. So for the record, my name is Zanny Marsh and I'm the Executive Director of the Red Cross of Northern Nevada. I'll put my eyeballs on so I can see what I'm doing. There we go. Okay. I just wanted to say that I don't know what they're doing at the Dilworth Academy, but that is incredibly impressive and I hope they continue to do that. So it's always interesting to me that people would, that think that they know what goes on at an organization in our own communities could benefit from a refresher. So I thought that I would come here both as a member of the resident of Sparks and also as a member of the Charter Committee. So I'm really pleased to be here today to talk about what Red Cross does and to provide you with a little information about how you might be able to better utilize our services. So as you can see, our services, well, one, we're down the street and across the country and also around the world. But even here in this community, our services include disaster relief. Biomedical is more of a statewide service. We don't have blood services here in the north with the exception of Elko. But we do offer preparedness, health, and safety services. You probably can think that Red Cross is synonymous with preparedness and we would be honored if you thought that. We provide a number of CPR and wilderness first aid and first aid classes. And we'd like to think that we're one of the first calls that members of the community will make if they want to know how to save their life or the life of another or to really become, come to the aid of another person. We also provide a lot of international services, certainly with the crisis that we have seen really around the world. We have members of many ethnic and racial groups who also live here and we're providing services through our international services. And then, as you might imagine, service to the armed forces, given that we have a large military presence in Northern Nevada. Anytime that there is a disaster or an emergency, the Red Cross is likely to be involved in connecting a member of the military to their family members. So Red Cross responds to 70,000 disasters and emergencies a year. Many of those, you're familiar with, in the West would include earthquakes and wildfires and flooding. And then our most common disaster is home fires. So in our community, and that's Northern Nevada, volunteers respond to a home fire every four days. Statistics tell us that every single day, seven people are killed in a home fire and 40 people are injured. So when you do the math, you can imagine that there's going to be loss of life here in Northern Nevada and there are going to be people who are injured in a home fire. Volunteers at the Red Cross, we're on call 24/7. We provide immediate financial assistance and lodging, food and clothing, and then certainly a safe and clean place to stay. And what that means is that for families or individuals in apartment complexes, for example, when you have been displaced by an emergency, a broken pipe, by a home fire, by a law enforcement perimeter that's had to be drawn rather widely, then the Red Cross is available to establish a shelter. And then if you are unable to go home, we provide financial assistance and that comes absolutely immediately so that you are able to go out and then secure lodging, food and clothing, and a safe and clean place to stay. I would like to make for the record that one of the things that we do not do is we do not, we do not provide clothing or any other used goods, with the exception of some tennis shoes maybe and a blanket, if, you know, if the weather conditions merit it. But from our perspective, money spends the same and clothing and goods may not necessarily be the same. So we want everybody to be treated equitably and equally. We have community partners in the goodwill that often respond with us and they can provide those goods and services, but really the Red Cross deals in cash. And then, as I said, client assistance, well, I didn't say this, client assistance is provided free of charge and it's thanks to the generosity of community partners and the American people. But it's the free of charge that I probably want to call your attention to. At no time is a client ever asked or ever expected to return any dollars to the Red Cross. This is all 100% funded by the American people. And, and, and it is really, it's an honor to be able to do that. So we can't do it alone. Our service area is 85,000 square miles. That's the Northern Nevada service area. We have bricks and mortar in Incline Village, Reno Sparks, Winamucca, Elko, and we just picked up Tonopah on July 1. We're doing all of that with six paid staff, which means that we are doing, we are delivering services in all of those areas, but we certainly couldn't do it with six people. So the only way that we could do that is to have 97% of our workforce to be volunteers. Client assistance is available for immediate need. Service to armed forces, we're connecting members of the military. And just in the last couple of months, we've established new relationships with the Air National Guard, with the Nevada National Guard. And then we're looking to establish an actual MOU with Fallon. And then our volunteer services, we are pretty much everywhere. And if there are any members of the community who are interested in serving with the Red Cross, we are more than happy to open our telephone lines, open our office doors, and greet people when they come in because we can put them to work. Finally, here is a way that you can reach all of us, www redcross.org. And then also for apps, which is really fantastic, the American Red Cross Emergency exclamation point app is available on the Apple Store and then Google Play for Android. That's a free app that is kind of one-stop shopping. So if you have it set correctly, it will, it can actually clear a room. And I know this from personal experience. There is a siren that will sound in the event of an earthquake or flooding. And it is also available, there's a, there is a feature on that app that you can identify a member of your family or someone outside of the area so that the phone will automatically tell that person that you are safe or to give contact information so that, so that we can connect you. And then in case anybody doesn't know, the American Red Cross of Northern Nevada moved recently, we physically relocated. So we have moved from Corporate Boulevard and we are now located at 3953 South McCarran in Reno. One of the, one of the things I'd like to bring to your attention, with the city of Reno, I started this policy that when we have a home fire in any of the wards in the city of Reno, I personally send a little email and I will let you know that Red Cross has responded and what services that were provided. responded and what services that were provided and to how many people. I would like to make the same invitation to you if you are interested. It helps you to know how to respond if a, if a member of the community has been displaced from their home and they are looking for services and, and the Red Cross has, there's a 99% chance that the Red Cross responded while the fire department was still on site providing the services that I described. So if you have any questions about whether or not a member of the community has been served, please feel free to give me a call, and if you'd like, I will be happy to include you on our email distribution list so that you're aware of that as well.
Yeah, I think we'd love to have that done. I see the city manager's taking a note over there, so we'll have someone contact you then, Zanny, and you can hook us up with that. That's wonderful. I think it's good for us to know. I mean, I know, we all know when we have a fire and all that stuff, but we don't know what happened to the folks or if they got any services or anything like that. So that's, that's great. So we'll, so someone will contact you and we'll get hooked up for that. So any questions for Zanny? Go ahead.
Thanks for coming down today, Zanny. I think everybody knows who the Red Cross is, but now they know what they do. And I'm glad you told me you moved because I'd be showing up at your other address.
That's right.
Work on those programs we're working on. So thanks for coming down today, really. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Red Cross is great. They do good work, and I appreciate, we all appreciate what they do. So thanks for coming and letting us know what's going on.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. You bet. Okay, 7.5, Presentation, Sparks 13th Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. Welcome, Andre.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Sparks City Council members. Andre Steagle, Recreation Admin Supervisor with the Sparks Parks and Recreation Department. We have the 13th Town, excuse me, the 13th Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament coming up next Friday, October 23 at Red Hawk Golf Resort. It'll be on the hills course this year, and we're hoping for a good turnout. The proceeds benefit the Sparks Youth Scholarship Fund, which goes a long way in assisting children from low-income households, take part in recreation programs offered through the city at little or no cost to them. We're 12 days into the month of October, and we've already assisted nine children through that fund to be able to take part in swim lessons, flag football, volleyball, and get ready for the upcoming youth basketball season. Those children are ages, age in range from six to 12, and so very important resource in our community. So the Mayor's Cup has been a cornerstone, cornerstone for helping develop that fund in the 13 years that we've had it. So the tournament and the proceeds are key. We have space left for some players. The rate is $100 per player. That includes lunch, green fees, cart, and of course, we'll have awards following the tournament as well. We have golf hole sponsorship still available for $100, and anybody that's interested, we would just hope they would consider contacting us. Cityofsparks.us website has plenty of information, or they can call the Recreation Office at 353-2376.
Thanks, Andre. This is a good deal for, you know, let me tell you, I haven't played much lately, but I used to play in a lot of golf tournaments, and a hundred bucks for a golf tournament and lunch on Red Hawk, that's nothing, let me tell you. You know, the most of them are 125, 150, 200. So, and I've made it known that I'm not going to play because it wouldn't be fair, right, Andre? You know, I always win, right?
Exactly. Very, very kind of you.
It is. So I'm not going to play to make sure that somebody else can win the first prize. So anyway, come out and support it. It's good for the, for the kids that can't afford it. And again, 100 bucks, nothing for a golf tournament.
Exactly.
Questions?
Yeah, it's a 10:00 AM. Thank you.
10:00 AM shotgun start, right?
Shotgun start. Just a quick reminder, we do have a lovely Mayor's Club trophy. It's huge. It's, I just carried it out of Red's Golden Eagle Grill last Friday. They've had it on display for the past year as they were the winning team last year, and it'd be nice to present in a local business, display it.
Great.
Thank you.
Questions? All right. Thanks, Andre. Appreciate it. No smart remarks, okay? Pardon me? Obviously, you're not on it then, so.
I'm the coach.
Okay, consent items, 8.1 through 8.6. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt?
Motion approved by one point, and 8.6 is outlined by staff.
No second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Ratty to approve Consent Items 8.1 through 8.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to general business. 9.1, Consideration and Possible Acceptance of the 2015 COPS Office Hiring Program Grant in the Amount of $250,000 over a three-year period for two full-time police officers. Chief Allen, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Before I get started on this agenda item, I just want to clarify a point. Earlier in this meeting, we had a moment of silence for a 13-year-old victim. If we're referring to the 13-year-old victim in the city of Sparks at Curtis Moore Park, he is still alive.
Sorry.
So that is the good news.
That's the good news.
He has actually spoken his first words and is going to start rehabilitation. So the fact that there is a fund out there for him, the family is definitely going to need support to pay for medical costs and to move forward. So if community members want to get involved in that, there are those opportunities. So I just wanted to clarify that now this is the second time that he has been declared dead when he is yet alive. So the first was on the news, and the second was today, so I am...
Well, the moment of silence was good, anyway.
Well, we still need to keep him, we still need to keep him in our prayers and our thoughts and make sure that he has a recovery.
Thanks, Chief.
But he is in fact alive, so.
Good.
But as we moved on to this agenda item, this is something that we are coming back before the council. Back in June, I asked for your permission to apply for this grant where we would look to hire two police officers as community relations officers in correlation with the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services through the Department of Justice. I am pleased to announce that we did make that application, and we have been awarded those two police officers. So I come before you today formally asking your permission for me to sign the acceptance letter that I have waiting for me back in the office to hire those two police officers. As a reminder, these two police officers are going to, one, create a public information officer, they're going to continue our social media, our community outreach, specifically geared towards the minority communities in Sparks, and also implementing some of the programs that are outlined in the President's 21st Century Policing Report that was published earlier this year. So the total cost to the city would be approximately 175,000 per officer for a total of the 350,000 over the three-year period. In the staff report, I forgot those couple of words of "per officer" at the end of one of my sentences. So just to make it clear, it's a $250,000 grant. There should be no fiscal impact this year. By the way, that we can report the grant, it should be covered, and then we could budget properly for the upcoming two years of the grant cycle. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chief Allen, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Chief, thank you for both of the processes, getting this done.
If I remember the grant proposal properly, one of the reasons why we approved this was that we don't have a hook at the end of the three years, do we? That if we can't fund it, we can, we can eliminate the positions, or do we have to keep the positions?
Typically, with these grants, there is a request that we keep the person hired for a fourth year. However, if the city can show that they have a financial burden, the Office of Community Oriented Policing has historically allowed our cities to opt out of that fourth year, but it is highly encouraged and expected that we would keep those officers on for a fourth year.
Okay. And, you know, and I, and, you know, the two items that you're doing with this, you know, is that the community outreach programs, things that we've been, we've been lacking on, and I know you're doing the best you can with the resources, so I support it, and I'll be more than happy to make a motion to, to accept this grant.
Okay, we've got some other questions for you. Let's wait a minute for that, and then I'll call on you to make the motion. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, are these two new additional positions that were, in addition to officers, we have, or will you be taking officers and shifting them over to this program because they are best suited for what this, I mean, I fully support this, and I think it's awesome we got the grant to do this, but is it too additional?
Yes, and the next, the next agenda item is the complement, addition of the two police officers that we will be adding to the complement. Once we get those two officers hired, we will then take two existing more experienced officers that have the skill sets that we are looking for to work within this grant and apply them into the grant position.
Okay, so it will be your experienced officers that will be?
Yes, our experienced officers that will be moved into this position, backfilled by the newer officers that we will hire.
Okay, and I think especially the timeliness of this for, given the mood of the country and the incidents across the country, your department and the more we can do to improve community relations and communication and our relationships with the community and our police force is, is, is great and is improving, and I think this will even, you know, continue to improve it at a time where we really need that to happen, but I think you guys are doing an awesome job, and this will make it even better. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to move to accept the 2015 COPS Office Hiring Program Grant, amount of 250,000 over a three-year period for two full-time police officers. And thank you, Chief, for your work.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve Agenda Item 9.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Good job. Next, 9.2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of a Complement Change to Add Two Police Officers to the, to Accommodate Acceptance of the 2015 COPS Office Hiring Program Grant Towards Payroll Costs for Two Full-Time Police Officers. Chief Allen.
Yeah, this is a companion item to the previous item that would add our, add the complement of officers. We would then move from 108 sworn police officers to 110 sworn officers.
Okay. Questions for Chief? Seeing none, Mr. Schmidt?
It'd be crazy for the city council not to approve this item when we just approved the last item, so I'll make a motion to increase the complement of the police department to include two additional police officers for a total of, you have 89, but you just said 110. It's immaterial what the complement is, the number is just an increase to above what you have right now.
On the police officer complement, it would add those two. Total sworn personnel is going up from 108 to 110. The officer number is the number indicated in the report.
Thank you. Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve Agenda Item 9.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Good job. Okay, 9.3 is a first reading of Bill Number 2696, An Ordnance to Rezone a Property from SF6 Single Family Resident to MUD Mixed Use District for a Site Approximately 1.4 Acres Located at 1250 Sullivan Lane, Sparks, Nevada. Go ahead.
A general ordinance, rezoning real property owned by Moana Investments LLC from SF6 Single Family Residential to MUD Mixed Use District on a site totaling 1.4 acres in size located at 1250 Sullivan Lane, Sparks, Nevada, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Teresa, I don't have the regular sheet. What's the time and date we're going to do this particular, is it going to be on the 20, the next city council meeting?
Yes, it is. The next, the public hearing will be held at the next regular meeting, 2 o'clock on October 26.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion, any questions? Okay. October 26 at the 2 o'clock city council meeting will be the next, the second reading and hopefully approval or denial of this particular item. Okay, moving on. Here we go, boys and girls. 11.1, Second Reading, Public Hearing, Consideration and Possible Action on Bill Number 2694, An Ordnance by the City of Sparks Amending Title 20 to Include Standards for Urban Agriculture and Other Matters Properly Relating Thereto. Let's get ready to rundle. Mr. Rundle, welcome.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jim Rundle, Senior Planner, here to present the urban agriculture proposal. In 2011, the Sparks City Council elected to conduct an overhaul, an overall comprehensive overhaul to the zoning code. With all of the direction provided to staff with that direction, the council also included the consideration of an urban ag component, urban agriculture component, and potentially as a portion of that urban agriculture component, allowing for chickens and bees as accessory uses in the city of Sparks. The city council did approve the new zoning code in August and removed the urban agriculture component so that further discussion could be made on it, and that's why we are here today. As I researched urban agriculture in other jurisdictions in the United States, I found that cities such as Detroit, Portland, Oregon, Austin, Texas, Boston, Massachusetts, Cleveland, and Seattle have approved urban agriculture in their jurisdictions. The urban agricultural proposal is more than just chickens and bees, as I was saying, and it would be to permit community gardens and such at a site for a group or even a private property owner. This could include the cultivation of herbs, fruits, trees, vegetables, and other things such as that. This could also be for personal use or for off-site consumption of what is grown on the urban agriculture site. I wanted to point out some pictures on the, of some sites over in the city of Reno which have permitted urban agriculture. This is a, this is a, let's see. This is an example of urban agriculture. You can see vegetables and the garden that's growing there on the site. Here's another example of, of the urban agriculture from a different perspective. It shows that a sign is there, gives some of the rules for visiting the site, and then here is another sign showing where the website is for the site. In the proposal, there are requirements, as proposed, again, to identify how you would contact someone who is operating the site. I wanted to talk about this parcel over in the city of Reno. It was told to me that this parcel used to be, have significant amounts of debris and hazards and overall blight. Permitting the use here has encouraged cleanup of the site. Many point out that when this site, many point out that this site is now more attractive to potential development, and if it were to be developed, there is very little demolition that would have to occur at the site, just minor grading. So it is, to an extent, kind of a nice temporary use to permit at the site. Urban agriculture in the city of Sparks has been proposed to be allowed in the multifamily districts, the single-family districts, the mixed-use district residential neighborhood, the mixed-use district, mixed residential district. So these districts are called out on the map over to your right and to my left, but I want to point out that it would not include the planned developments in the city of Sparks. I'm going to point a laser over your shoulder. This Pyramid Highway, La Pasada, Vista Boulevard coming along here, Sparks Boulevard in this proximity. This is the foothills of Wingfield Springs, Wingfield Springs, Pioneer Meadows, North Kylie Ranch, DeAndrea, and the vistas, or, or, or close enough that I can do with a laser pointer from here. Anyway, I want to point out on the map that the areas that are white are not proposed currently to permit urban agriculture in those districts. And again, the districts that would permit it, the yellow represents single-family districts in the older part of Sparks. Here's McCarran Boulevard, Sparks Boulevard, Reed High School, I think, is right in this, this proximity. The blue area that's highlighted on the maps are the districts within what we used to call the TOD, where now the council has approved it to be called the Mixed Use District, and there are the two districts within the Mixed Use District that are proposed to permit the urban agriculture. I need to point out this slide, this is attached in your ordinance as Exhibit A. This exhibit in your staff report is not correct. It's, it somehow showed a permitted or a P across the bottom line, which says urban agriculture, across the entire row. I need to make it clear that this is not what was intended to be proposed. It is proposed as the map reflects, and basically there should be a P on all of the SF districts, so the districts starting with an SF. The MF district was to be included... MF district was to be included, and then the mixed residential, and the residential neighborhood of the Mixed Use District. I don't know if I, I don't think I can zoom in on that, but for the council, in what you have in the ordinance, there are Ps across here. This, this, this slide shows what it was proposed, what should be proposed, and that is in the single-family districts, the multifamily districts, the mixed residential in the Mixed Use District, and the residential neighborhood in the Mixed Use District, which again, we formally called the TOD. I wanted to point out that this is how it would, in your ordinance, this is how it would read. So this section applies to SF, MF, MUD, RN, or MUD MR. And I do want to reiterate that this would not apply to the planned developments in the City of Sparks. Planned developments we're more familiar with for the public, which was called out more thoroughly in the staff report, but planned developments are areas such as Wingfield Springs, DeAndrea, Pioneer Meadows, North Kylie Ranch. Some standards that staff has proposed for conducting urban agriculture at a site would be that you have to obtain a business license, that you're restricted to the zoning districts as we have just discussed, that you have to maintain the site. There is a standard in there that requires or addresses drainage. In the initial public comment at the beginning of today's meeting, it was, it was said that there are no, there are no standards on drainage, but there is a standard. It's Standard F that addresses drainage on an urban agriculture, on an urban ag site. It prohibits livestock, so you would not be able to have horses or cows at the site. It requires the informational sign, similar to what we saw at the Reno site. It restricts when you can use mechanized equipment, such as tractors or generators, to certain hours to reduce the amount of impacts on the surrounding properties. And that, for the most part, concludes my presentation on the urban agriculture component, but I wanted to make sure that it is understood the difference between the community gardens and then the accessory uses such as chickens and bees, which I'll go into now. The chickens and bees have received the most, oh, sure.
And I think this is kind of general here, but, you know, you say, okay, you're required, if you're going to do this, you're required to do A, B, C, and D. I think, to me, that would be important to know what that list is.
Sure. It's in, it's in the staff report. Can I pull that up on here?
You have a page on it.
It's in the analysis.
It's, and you can either in the analysis or in the ordinance portion. I'll try to pull it up on here as well.
Okay.
I see attached table. Analysis, I went down right, attached table, and it's right there.
To the bottom, to the side.
Okay.
City Services.
Oh.
That will work too.
Sorry, sorry about that.
No problem.
You know, I'm not interested in what's in the list.
Okay.
I'm just interested that we have a list.
Sure.
So if somebody calls up and says, okay, what do I need to do to do this? And if you, by the end of the meeting sometime, just go ahead and get me on the right page of it, because I'm coming up with just the ordinance and I don't, I'm not finding my, the same thing you are. Maybe I'm just missing something here.
Councilman Schmidt, or Councilman Schmidt, it's appropriate to point out, like you say, if it were to be proposed as, as it's, if it were to be approved as proposed in the ordinance, we would be able to hand an applicant or a person considering this use a list. And you can see here, business license. It calls out the zoning, that onsite sales do not occur unless you obtain a special use, a conditional use permit. When the council approved the new code, we changed the wording from special use permit to conditional use permit. But anyway, I don't need to go through all of them, but you can see.
I've got the list now. If I was on the wrong, I was looking under the ordinance and not under staff, staff thing. So I guess, even though that this is a non-income-producing, basically, procedure, we're asking for a business license to be, to come to, for the person to pull a business license, which is, I believe it's $80 a year for the first, you know, $40,000 or $10,000 for the business. Fight ass, don't yell at me. I got that numbers wrong. But you're going to, we're saying, because this is agriculture, you know, that we want you to pull a business license on it. And that fits within our business code right now to do that?
Yeah, the thought, the thought process behind it, and we did discuss it with, for what we could find to be interested parties in conducting urban agriculture. But the concept behind requiring a business license was, one, we could ensure and help them understand what the standards were. And then, number two, we could ensure that they had property owner permission to do it at a site. That was, that was what we are proposing to the council, but it's up to the council's discretion on whether or not that should be required or not.
And this is just for community gardens type things?
Yes, sir.
But for a homeowner, for chickens, they're not going to have to pull the business license?
That's right.
Do we have it, this ability to go ahead and talk about the cost of this business license at all, or is it just being proposed at this time? I mean, because I see that you're, you know, for someone who wants to do a community garden, they're usually not moneymakers. So you got another $80 a year to go ahead and go on top of the water consumption and everything else like that, that, you know, somebody's probably donating. I'm pretty sure there's not a fee for people to go use a community garden. So I'm just trying to make it a simple streamlined effort as possible on it.
I think you have a reasonable point. I don't know what the cost would be to them, but I think you have a reasonable point.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, on the land that they put the community garden, I guess my first question is, who owns the land? And is it, can any property owner or, the people obviously who are going to establish the, the community garden, I'm thinking about liability. So who's, who's the landowner and who's liable for what happens as far as insurance purposes for that land?
Could I defer to the city attorney on that?
Typically, under Nevada law, when it comes to landowner liability, there has to be a demonstrated dangerous condition on the land. I don't think that this would necessarily be a recreational use for which a landowner would be immune. I do believe that who owns the land could be subject to any type of a claim for someone who was injured on the land, any type of environmental issues that may involve pollution. If there's, other than that, ultimately, the landowner would be responsible and would probably be liable.
Okay, so we're looking at, they, they obviously would need permission, and we require proof of permission of that landowner before we would issue the permit. That's part of the process that we're looking at?
Yes, and I, you know, my, my philosophy, or the team's philosophy, when we proposed the standards was, if we require a business license, we can make sure we get those things. Councilman Schmidt's comments are appropriate as well. The cost, they're probably not going to make significant amount of revenue, but, and that can be up to the council. But yes, that was our maybe short-sighted answer to making sure they got property owner permission is, and to make sure they understood all of the standards. As if they got a business license, we could hand them the standards and say, make sure you do all of these things, and we could ensure they had the property owner's permission.
Well, and I think that's important that we have, whether we decide that $80 is too much and we want to go with a different fee, but I think that process to guarantee permission and that they understand the standards is important. And I have one other quick question. In the other areas that, say, under the, you know, the homeowners' associations, would anyone be able to, it would be up to the HOAs and CCNRs, if they allowed any community gardens, say, out in Wingfield Springs or in the vistas, or would they not be permitted to? Is it all at the discretion of CCNRs?
Sure. The, for urban agriculture, I'll go back to the map that we have hanging on the wall over here to the west, and is also included in your packet. This urban agriculture component would only be permitted in the areas that are highlighted in any color on the zoning map. So the different colors on the map represent different zoning districts. The yellow is the single family. The blue is formerly the TOD, now the Mixed Use District. The pinkish-purple are former agriculture districts that were years ago farms or ranches in the county. We've annexed them and carried over the zoning because nothing has occurred on, on the site. If you go further north in the city, you can see how our development in the City of Sparks occurred under the handbook process. DeAndrea in the east part of the city, a newer portion of the vistas, Maramonte, Wingfield Springs, Pioneer Meadows, Cimarron, Upper Highlands, North Kylie, Stone Brook. All of the handbooks, as we call them, staffed us, all of the planned developments, more commonly called, would not permit, would not permit, uh, community gardens, urban agriculture with this ordinance. If, if there was a desire in one of those planned developments, let's just use Wingfield Springs as an example. If there was a desire to permit community gardens in Wingfield Springs, it would require a planned development handbook amendment to, to come through and ultimately Planning Commission recommendation, and the city council would have to approve that in a public hearing. All of the property owners would be noticed within the development, within a proximity of the development.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ready.
Just want a clarification on the urban agriculture component. We've talked a lot about the folks who aren't, where it's more of a community garden, creating space for people to be able to go and farm or grow their produce. But the Los City Farm example, I mean, that's an example where that produce is actually being sold. And so there's nothing in our ordinance that stops, I know they can't sell it on site unless they have a conditional use permit, but there's nothing that stops them from selling their produce at a farmer's market or a co-op or something along those lines.
That's correct.
Okay.
Nothing in our zoning ordinance, anyway, that would, would stop them, prohibit them from that.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
If urban agriculture is permitted as proposed with the, with the use table as we identified, let's see. Restricting it to the single-family and multifamily districts and the two districts within the mixed-use area, it would permit someone to be able to raise chickens or bees in one of the colored areas on the map as accessory uses, as we've talked about. So again, if you wanted to, if you wanted to have chickens or bees, you would have to have one of the zoning districts that have been discussed today. It would not be permitted necessarily by a planned development. I'm proposing that the council consider amending Policy 20.03.B.2, which is in your packet, to include the yellow highlighted areas. This would just make it, in my opinion, clearer to the public as to where it would be proposed. We would add, if the council so desired, I'm proposing they would add SF, MF, MUD, MR, and MUD RN. It is just my opinion that this clarifies where they're permitted, as opposed to having to tell, explain to a citizen that they're not able to do it in a planned development because there's own PD, and here's why. I just think it provides for some clearer language to the citizens.
So if they propose an amendment, you would like them to read this into that, that motion?
Yes. It's my opinion, Mr. Mayor, that this is how it is anyway, but this makes it clearer to someone, and maybe they wouldn't need an interpretation from staff.
Okay, good.
We have proposed standards for the keeping of chickens and bees at someone's, potentially at someone's house as an accessory use. One of the, one of the standards I wanted to point out is, now that we have this up, is Standard G, which says if the city receives a complaint, and after being given at least 24 hours' notice, a property owner that exercises the privilege of keeping chickens on their property agrees to allow for inspections by the administrator for compliance with the standards. And the administrator is the city manager or his designee, so it could be code enforcement in this case.
Steve's very pleased about that.
Yes, yes.
Questions, Mr. Lawson?
How do we note, what do we consider notice? Are we going to put a note on their door and walk away, or are we going to make contact with the property owner?
I believe we would make, I mean, that's a good question. Armando, Armando may be able to answer what code enforcement would do.
That is a good question, Councilman Lawson.
Armando and Ellis for the record. I think it would be written notice. We would either probably do a door hanger, and we would probably try to contact the property owner, you know, by telephone or by knocking on their door too, to, but some form of written notice would be required.
Okay, I just, all right, thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is where I get some, some concern, because I think we're actually writing legislation outside of our jurisdiction. And then we have given up in the City of Sparks animal control to Washoe County, and now we're going back in and writing into our, our code, and we're accepting animal control back again under these types of conditions. And so I, I think we need to either get the city attorney's opinion, or whether we even have, I mean, and right now, someone has chickens in their backyard, I don't believe we have jurisdiction over that. I mean, I know that there's, we have the PD books and everything else that said that, but we gave that up 10, 12 years ago. And I say that if we're going to, if we're going to write this in, that we're going to be the inspector, judge, everything else like that, this had better be in detail. You know, that it can't be that, well, you know, we're going to go knock on the door and maybe we're going to leave a written card, maybe we're going to get face-to-face, maybe we're not. You know, we are so vague in that area when it comes to code enforcement stuff. You know, we got a chance to do it right. A, we got to answer the question, are we responsible or not? You know, and B, how is the process going to happen? Because I think that it's only fair to the people who we do this. We walk in, put on the door, they said, you know, you got 24 hours, take care of this, and they've been gone for 23, then they're going to start panicking. And I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair to the citizens. So it's a pet pee of mine right now.
Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Jim, the, the ordinance states that if you have, and I could be wrong on this, 2,000 square feet, you get two chickens. 4,000, you get four.
Yes, sir.
6,000, you get six, and six is the maximum?
Sixteen.
Sixteen chickens is the maximum?
This part right here, number 1, 2, 3, and 4, is what you're referring to.
So how do you propose to regulate that? Because, and for each hen, they get 10 square feet. So for 16 chickens, you get 160 square feet? How are we, how are you going to regulate that? I mean, my, my guess is if you have 2,000 square feet and you want six hens or more, you're going to do it?
It, on a, I will try to, I'll try to answer. So you're saying, like, if you had 6,000 square feet and you had five hens, per the ordinance, you'd be out of compliance?
Right.
How is the city staff going to ensure that that regulation is not broken? It is, and we do need to have, I guess, Council, or City Attorney Adams address Councilman Schmidt's question, but similarly to how we would address any other type of code enforcement question, outside of understanding the previous question, we would do it on a complaint basis. If someone calls in and says, hey, I know that the parcel next to me is, is 5,999 square feet. They should only be able to have four hens, and I know they have five. That would be a complaint, similar to how we would go out and enforce weeds at a parcel or abandon, not abandon cars, but cars on blocks or something like that at a site.
Well, my concern is you won't be able to regulate this. And not only, let's say they have five hens and they don't have 50 square feet. For the hens, they've got 20 square feet. I don't think it's enforceable. That's my only, that's, I have a problem with this.
A lot of, a lot of enforcement per the standards, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, question for Mr. Adams.
So, question for Mr. Adams. Mr. Schmidt proposed, are, are you prepared to give us an answer for that, Chad, or?
I'm looking through Washoe County's animal control code, and they do define poultry, domesticated fowl or birds, which would at least imply that Washoe County intends to regulate or control. Poultry, domesticated fowl or birds. Now, that being said, and I think it depends on how you approach this. If you're going to amend our municipal code relating to the control of animals, then I think you run afoul of our agreement that we've entered into, afoul.
It's not, that's not a play on words, is it?
I didn't want to chicken out on.
Yeah.
So, I, I think that if you're attempting to just amend the general ordinances of Sparks to include chickens and include bees and the regulation thereof, or to create some type of a program for the control and management of chickens and bees, yeah, you would, you would run into a conflict with our inter-local agreement. However, this is a zoning law. And Washoe County has long acknowledged that the city can include in its zoning ordinances issues that involve animals, at least the location of animals and how those animals are gonna be taken care of. As a matter of fact, the Washoe County District Attorney has opined to the county commission that zoning laws, in fact, are appropriate to allow certain animal uses in some areas and not others. So, I don't necessarily think that we are, we have a, we have a problem with our inter-local agreement. I have not heard of any complaints or any issues raised by Washoe County concerning this particular zoning matter. And I think that even if Washoe County did have a problem with it, our charter specifically empowers the city council to make all those decisions concerning how the lands in Sparks are being used. So, to answer your question, I don't, I don't see a real problem here, sir. Yes, sir?
That question real quick, and it's line of thinking that if a bar, if a dog is barking in the city of Sparks, who do we call?
Animal control.
Real city.
Washoe County.
Yeah.
If there's any other type of animal problem in the city of Sparks, we call Washoe County. If there's a problem with a chicken, who are you gonna call?
Yeah. Same with other animals. People will usually call SPD. SPD will refer them over to Washoe County, and Washoe County will then may or may not refer them to anybody else.
Not to be disrespectful, ma'am, but this is discourse between the council only and then under, under public comment, you'll be able to.
I'm sorry, I do understand that, but actually.
Ma'am, there, there's, there's no discussion here now for you later on, please. Go ahead, Chad, I'm sorry.
No, and then.
I think I understood his question, but all calls go to Washoe County for enforcement. Our code enforcement officers aren't necessarily involved in this action.
Well, maybe a, just a change in protocol. Anybody who calls to complain about chickens, go to code enforcement. I'm sure Washoe County will be more than happy to refer people complaining about chickens to code enforcement.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's gonna be a circle.
It is, it's gonna, it's probably gonna be very frustrating for people who wanna complain about this.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I have a question on the parcel size. I'm, I'm concerned about that zero to 2,000 square feet. So, can someone who is in an apartment or townhouse that has no, no backyard, there's no parcel size, can they have two hens? And where would they put them? And how would they, I know you still have the, the coop size and location of the coop, but can it be on a balcony in an apartment complex? Because it can't be out front, but then your front, your backyard or back area might be the front of somewhere else. So, I'm concerned about that zero parcel size.
Yeah, I can appreciate the num, the proposal on number one of zero to 2,000 and, and the philosophy at one point was that there are parcels out there that were created a long time ago that do have front yards and backyards and side yards, and they're single-family residential. And they would be able to have chickens in their back, if, they would not be able to have chickens as an accessory use because their parcel was less than 6,000. But, we also thought, well, they, maybe they shouldn't be able to have as many as someone with a larger parcel of up to 6,000. I can't say that I actually had contemplated someone being in a townhouse, so I think it's a reasonable point that you have, that if they were in their, their townhouse or their condo. And the council may very well want to amend number one. I will point out letter D, just below that, that chickens shall be restricted from accessing the front yard. What this is basically saying is that you have to have some type of yard on your parcel for the chicken to be able to be kept. So, if you were in a true condo, you would not have a rear yard or a side yard, or balcony would not be considered as one of those for the chicken to be able to be in.
And, and it does say you can't access the front yard. Well, if you don't have a front yard, that's not an issue, but if your parcel size is zero, which means you don't have a parcel, you have a balcony or you have a little patio, but not a parcel. I'm concerned that we're at zero. I guess I'd feel more comfortable if it gave another minimum amount for the two hens instead of a zero indicating, I'm, I'm just thinking small patios or balconies are not a place to put a chicken in a coop above or below neighbors when there is no parcel attached. And that would be multifamily, I would guess, not many homes, most homes would have some sort of a backyard, some sort of a parcel.
In, in a, where I, I can appreciate your comment is more so like an condo condominium project, and you do have an actual parcel size, and typically the balcony is part of your parcel, airspace condominium or something like that. To get complicated, we do occasionally give easements where the balcony will go outside of the parcel, but, so you do have a, a parcel that is greater than, than zero, and it may be less than 2,000 square feet, but you don't have a yard on a condominium project because it's an airspace parcel. And so, they would not be able, in my opinion, they would not be able to comply with letter D of having a rear yard or a side yard where the chickens could be. They wouldn't be able to provide the coop on the balcony because the balcony is not considered a rear yard. There is no yard on a condominium project. But, there are not very many houses, there aren't, excuse me, there are not very many single-family residential parcels that have a parcel size between zero or 2,000. There may not be any for that matter. The reason, the reason that it, that it could apply is in the future, in the new zoning code, we did the council, that the council approved last month, they did permit a variety of housing types that we did not have before, which required planned development handbooks. Now, the zoning code would permit you to, for example, to have a Z lot. Maybe you have a very small lot with no front yard, but you do have a rear yard, and your, and your parcel is maybe 2,000 square feet. This could happen, one of the planner terms we use is a six-pack. We do have them out in Kylie Ranch South where they have very tiny front yards, but they do have a little bit of a backyard. Some of those parcels are very small. This would permit, in the case that something like that were to be constructed, the ability to keep chickens in their rear yard.
Ms. Craddy?
And I believe the code. The proposed code amendment also calls for being five feet away from the parcel line. And so, if you had that small of a parcel, you're gonna run into some practicalities around being able to be five feet away from a parcel line.
To create the coop.
Yeah.
Okay, questions? Anyone else, questions? Go ahead, Jim, you got anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, now comes the fun part. Public comments. You, you got, you have anything on bees?
I, I do not have anything additional on bees.
All right, you ready, folks, for public comment? Again, it's limited to three minutes. Talking time, please be respectful of other people's opinions and things, you know? We all have our own opinions if somebody's for or against. You may talk about them being for or against, but don't make it on a personal basis. We don't, we don't need to bring in personalities and things, please. I mean, we, sometimes we've gotten into personal back-and-forth kind of things, which is, is not respectful to anybody, anyone. So, give us your opinion, tell us what you think, opposed for, against, whatever you want. Again, three minutes. If you've got something that someone else has already said, make it brief, maybe, I wanna say, so we can get through this and make a decision. I guess that's about it. Any, any thing from the council? Okay. So, I'll start first, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ron.
Let's get buzzing along.
Let's get buzzing along, clucking along. I've got a couple of letters that need to be put into the record. One is from Janet Arrobio. She has a letter here, I will not read. It, it'll go into the record, but she is opposed to this particular item, so I'll make sure that gets in. Then I have a letter, letter from Candy Edlin. She is in favor of this, so those will go into the record, these two particular letters. Now, we'll start with people that want to speak. And I will call out your name, come down and give us your thoughts, and then I will call the second name right behind that one, so they'll be ready to go, and we'll keep this moving right along. Cheryl Murphy, followed by Tina Cook.
Can I give you guys some pictures and some information?
Sure, go ahead and hand it out and then make your comments.
I think there might be a minute or two. Are there any chickens?
Don't be nervous.
I am nervous.
No, there's.
This is exciting for me, this is a big deal.
I can guarantee there's no more than 2 million people watching, so you're okay.
That's good. My name is Cheryl Murphy. I'm a resident of Washoe County. I live in Spanish Springs, but I am definitely for chickens in the city of Sparks. And I keep chickens in Spanish Springs. And I, I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be, but chickens are loud, clucking all day long, has been said. Yeah, chickens cluck, but not near as much as dogs do. Find all the dogs in my neighborhood that bark all day long are much more of a nuisance than my chickens or any of my neighbor's chickens, which, you know, they cluck when they lay eggs, it's a song they sing. Roosters protect their hens and they make a little bit of a noise if there's a hawk or a predator. Beyond that, chickens are pretty quiet and they're very soothing. Chickens smell. Chickens only smell if you don't take care of your chickens. Way less than dogs do. That was proven earlier in a statement, I think, in the beginning of the meeting. I have two dogs that are much stinkier than any of my chickens at any time of the day, and I'm psychotic cleaner of poop. And I use sand in my coops and my runs, and I clean it like a cat box. It's quick, it's easy, it dries out the poop. It's a very manageable way to keep chickens. Some people prefer deep litter method, which is fine. It's a very good way of keeping odors down. There's many good ways to do this, there's no one right way. Chickens carry diseases. Well, yeah, so do dogs, rats, bats, many other wild varmints that can't be vaccinated. Chickens can be vaccinated against many things, but most backyard chickens are much healthier than poultry you'll find on large farms that we eat, some of us from the stores. Chicken diseases are quite manageable and very minimal, especially in this coast. Chickens should not be exposed to children. I don't even know what to say about that. There's just one of a thousand books right there. I mean, it's just, that's just crazy. I can't even go on about that. I would keep mean roosters away from children, yeah, that's valid point, but most people cull their mean roosters or keep them pinned, so that shouldn't be an issue. Chickens attract flies, mice, and vermin, no more than any other animal that we keep. Rats, mice, they're all there. Squirrels are there. Nothing we can do in our yards is gonna keep them away. Mine has a cage around our property, and that's just unrealistic. Chickens should be restricted to farming areas? No. I think that the young man that was speaking here earlier, I think there could be some adjustments in how many hens can be kept on a property. I think up to 16 reasonably is very reasonable, but no roosters, and I would agree with that in the city bounds, because roosters can be quite noisy and people need to love roosters, which I happen to love them very much. And I'll tell you what, I save a lot of money in therapy by just sitting in my yards and watching my chickens. They have personalities. I invite interview to come sit in my yard with me one day, have a cocktail, have a glass of water and watch my chickens. You'll be very relaxed at the end of your day. So, thank you very much, and vote chickens.
Thank you.
Oh, and November 5th, National Hugged Chicken Day, so.
Tina Cook, followed by Kevin DiGregorio.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tina Cook, and I am in favor of keeping chickens in the Sparks area. I am a new chicken mama, so I have only been at this for about six months. However, some of the things that I have found is, my husband and I have created a great, beautiful little area for the chickens, and we've designed this great chicken coop in a giant area, and we only have five hens and one rooster. However, and my husband did find this rooster when he went fishing out in the middle of the desert, came home and sit it with fish with a rooster, which is very odd, but people do that with their roosters, they dump them in the desert. But, we found they're very, they're very serene and peaceful. As Ms. Murphy said, hens are, they're not that loud. And actually, unless you were actually right there listening, they only sing when they're laying their eggs, and it's not even all of them. Roosters, however, I do agree, can be a little bit noisy at times. However, at night, chickens are blind at night, they go to sleep at night, and they don't make a sound until the morning. But, something I found that was interesting is these two articles, chickens are used as therapy now. They're now being used as therapy animals for people of all ages to address a wide variety of issues, including dementia, Alzheimer's, psychiatric illness, depression, and autism. Their calming effects help with symptoms like anxiety, emotional distress, and social frustration. And they also encourage people to get outside and be outside more and, you know, instead of sitting on the phone and being online and just doing nothing with your life. The other one I found is there's a fact that in Belgium, one city is actually giving three laying hens to 2,000 homes with an effort to reduce the landfill cost. The city officials expect to recover a significant portion of the $600,000 a year that the city spends on dealing with this type of household trash, because a single chicken can bio-recycle about seven pounds of food in a month. So, if just 2,000 households raised three hens alone, it could divert 252 tons of waste from landfills annually. Chickens eat just about everything. And, you know, there are irresponsible pet owners, no matter what, what kind of animal you have, and there's responsible ones. And I believe that the same laws and rules should affect to chicken owners who care and love their pets as for dogs. If they're noisy, I believe we should be given a chance to take care of that. If there's a problem with a smell, those of us who take care of them and take care of them very well should be allowed to, you know, be given a chance, just like people who don't have dog houses and proper, adequate homing for their animals that are kept outside all the time. We should be given the same respect. And plus, we also raise our chickens for food, organic eggs. Mine are, my pets, they'll be with me till they die, that's just how I am, but I'm, I'm finding this is, it is very stress-reducing. I love them, and, and I believe that, as Ms. Murphy said, dogs are much louder, barking all day and all night in my neighborhood than my chickens could ever possibly be. And I, I hope that you consider allowing all of us to keep our chickens and passing this. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tina, appreciate it. Kevin DiGregorio, followed by Marnie DiGregorio.
Hi, my husband and I want to support him, I was gonna talk, I'm his wife, Marnie.
Okay, come on down. I'm assuming he has the same opinion as you do, or?
Yeah.
You guys, you guys get along well? Did you give it to him? Yeah, do you guys get along well, or?
No, he loves the chickens as much as I do.
Okay, good, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I said, hello and thank you. My husband and I moved to Sparks from Reno 18 months ago, moving from an apartment that we rented to a house that we bought. I thought for sure chickens were okay in Sparks, since I was very well aware that they are okay in Reno, and we were very sad to find out that was not true. I lived in Las Vegas for a few. I lived in Las Vegas for a few years, and I even had a couple of hens there, and they ate bugs and laid eggs, there was no problems, and I was very sad when I moved and I had to leave them. People worry about the smell and the flies. The routine of cleaning them up after them is no different than the routine of cleaning up after our dogs, we have two. Both can and will attract flies if they're left unkept, like having a dog, having chickens requires responsible ownership. Our friends in Reno have chickens, can't say, as I recall, any barnyard odors, I work in Reno and live out here, and I don't see a single bit of difference between one city or the other. I say let the folks in Sparks that have chickens keep them, and let the folks that want them to have them. Chances are, the non-chicken people wouldn't even notice a difference, you know, they're in our backyards, you don't even know. Let us have an animal that gives us a joy, it's a non-chemical way of getting down bugs, they, they, you know. Taking care of, I don't, just let us have our birds, we just love them. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Marnie. Julie Kane, followed by Mandy Gruper. And if I misspell your, or mispronounce your name, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's correct, Kane. I've sent you guys all emails, a couple of emails about this situation, so I won't repeat what they've already said. I know that you have some logistic issues with, you know, what, what I just heard you talking about with the planner. But I would like to say that I am one of those people that got a blue door hanger on my door, and it was frankly, a little bit, it made me very angry, because it didn't say anything on the door hanger, what I was supposed to do, who I was supposed to call. It just said 10 days, that's it, that's all you have, good luck getting rid of your chickens, you know, it just, it made me angry. I love my chickens, I keep them very clean, most of the times, I guess one neighbor knew that I had them, because I had them for four years, and all of a sudden, one neighbor complained, so I have to get rid of them, I just don't think that's fair. Like I said, I understand that there are, there are things that you guys have to work through from a legal point, that's fine, but don't punish us by taking our chickens away while you're working through these issues. I just, I want to keep my chickens. I can't see as to where, in the big scheme of life, that having five chickens in my backyard is going to disrupt anyone else's life. I really don't have much more to say than that, I mean, I, like I said, I've sent you guys emails, so I won't repeat it. But I really want you to pass this, and thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Gruper, followed by Mary Engstrom.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, fellow City Council members. My name is Amanda Gruper, and I am the local 4-H leader. I don't live here, I do live up by Virginia City. I'm also president of the Northern Nevada Poultry Fanciers Association. And while I could go on and on about the benefits of chickens and why you should allow people to have them, sorry, I'm going to get a little emotional, when I hear a lot of concerns about how they will be regulated and who will be responsible for them. So I'm going to address that instead, because as president of the Northern Nevada Poultry Fanciers Association, I work hand in hand with Washoe Animal Control. And when they receive complaints about chickens, or roosters, or other poultry, I personally go and pick them up and find them new homes, generally with my 4-Hs kids.
That's all right, take your time.
I have three sons of my own, and I can't imagine how much different their lives would be if they were forced to live in a house with no pets, and I realize that chickens, to most people, probably seem like livestock. But we're not asking you to allow foster farms to move in and slaughter chickens next to your home. As a matter of fact, as a 4-H leader, I do require that my older children raise meat, birds for fare, and things, because I think it's a good experience. And I've been to farm days and showed children chickens and geese and things, you wouldn't believe the number of inner-city kids who show up and think that a goat is a dog. They don't know what a goat, or a cow, or a chicken is. And I have to assume that that's where our world is going, and I'm a 4-H leader, because that's not the way I want our kids to be raised. So, Mr. Rundle has my personal information, and if you guys pass this, and you ever have a question about what somebody's chicken coop should look like, or what they should be fed, or how noisy they're going to be, or if there's a better breed for a family that doesn't fly, or an elderly person passes away and their birds need new homes, I will be the one who handles that. I have other people in our club, and they are more than willing to stand in if I'm not available. This isn't a part-time thing for me that I do aside from my full-time job, this is my full-time job, is helping people with their livestock and their 4-H kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Mandy. Mary Engstrom, followed by Deb Walker. Is Mary still here? She's in favor of this ordinance. Deb Walker? Is that you, Deb? Deb Walker, she's in favor. Paul Hollis, I know he's here. Followed by Shelley, I can't read the last name, so Shelley ought to do. Welcome, Paul. You're, never mind, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I want to thank you for considering this. Ms., Councilman Ratty, years ago, brought this before the forefront, to the forefront for us. We have been involved in the business for 20 years at Rail City Garden Center. We do sell chickens. It's the way, it's the wave of the future. When we put, helped, put these regulations together, there was a group of people brought in by planning, and we worked on this, and it specifically says chickens. We took out poultry. There's no ducks, there's no geese, turkeys, it's just chickens. And you'll hear all the, the second speaker this morning, earlier, talked about the seven myths, I absolutely concur. I am a member on the board of the Sustainable Poultry Network, which is a nationwide association of breeders that are putting these things together, for having sustainable poultry. We encourage people to have this. This allows them to have some eggs, have a pet. I'm telling you, every one of these that's in the two to six range, that chicken will never go in the stew pot, it'll be a pet till it's gone. Some of the main things, most importantly, it doesn't supersede any CCNRs. It just allows people right over here that have a 25 by 100-foot lot to have two chickens. I think that's important, they're clean, they're healthy, and I know you won't ever see any feral chickens. So, we'll get away from that. But I think it's important to allow some of these things. The community gardens, you know, every school in the district's trying to put in their own community garden, we need to expand on that. The bees are another issue, which, we raise bees, and they're not an issue in the neighborhood at all. They're very well managed, they have to be, so I strongly support you to pass this. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul, appreciate it. Shelley, I can't read the last name, I'm sorry. Followed by Mr. Gamboni, Gambroni. Is Shelley here? Shelley De, De, DE something, no. And she doesn't put either way, which doesn't say for or against, so, neutral. Giambroni? Drake, he's in favor. T. Vivian Davis, come on down, Ms. Davis, followed by Ann Luella.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council members and concerned citizens. My name is T. Vivian Davis, I am a resident of Reno, Nevada, in the Rustic Manor development area, it's kind of near Collin Ranch. I'm here in support of backyard chickens and bees. I just wanted to say that I had a neighbor that has had chickens for over a year, four houses away, I had no idea. I am right near the Steamboat Ditch Trail, several people own chickens, there is no smell, as others have said, the hens only appear to cluck when they're laying eggs, and it sounds like a small child laughing a little bit. Yeah, it's not terribly loud, it's not even as loud as I'm talking to you right now. I am not a chicken owner currently, but I am very interested in owning chickens. I don't see any problem with someone having six chickens. People have plenty of land where I am, but not acres and acres on a third of an acre plot, you could have two chickens very comfortably, I believe. And that's all I wanted to say, is that I supported backyard chickens.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ann Luella, followed by Renee Peddieris. Welcome in.
Thank you, Council members and Mayor Martini, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ann Luella, I am project director for a small farm agriculture program at Western Nevada College, and I'm president of Nevada Grown, a nonprofit organization promoting Nevada agriculture. I am also a 10-year resident of Sparks and a homeowner. I am here today in support of the ordinance for urban agriculture, including keeping chickens and bees. While I'm not a farmer, I work full-time in the agriculture industry, and I'm very familiar with urban agriculture, including beekeeping and egg production in urban settings. Safety and hygiene are the first things that come to mind when I think about chickens and bees in a city setting. I am a Sparks homeowner. Do I want chickens and a chicken coop in the yard next to mine? You bet I do, and I hope my neighbors will be generous and share their eggs. I've been to dozens of homes with backyard chickens, they are clean, there is no foul smell, and quite honestly, I have found that chicken owners are often much more respectful of their neighbors, and make better pet owners than many dog owners. Ann Arbor, Michigan, Fort Collins, Colorado, and our neighbor city of Reno are a few of many cities that allow backyard chickens. Is urban beekeeping safe? The cities of New York, San Diego, Santa Monica, and San Francisco all think so, as they allow urban beekeeping. I'm sure that the research was extensive before making that decision. On a personal note, while I do not own bees, my front yard is home to, my front yard is home to 500 to 1,000 bees a day in the summer, as I have 25 lavender plants in my yard, in addition to many other bee-loving plants. My children, my grandchildren, my neighbors, my neighbors' children pick flowers and vegetables next to the bees. In 10 years, no one has been stung, including my dog, who likes to eat bees when he can catch them. To the contrary, these children are learning valuable lessons about pollination and food production, lessons that are lost in today's urban technical world. As for urban agriculture, a look at the city of Reno and new ordinances there attest to its value. The community garden at Paradise Park celebrated its 17th year, and Lost City Farm, a beautiful urban farm that the city planner talked about, is often in the news and in the spotlight for revitalizing urban blight. The standards for this proposal are well thought out, and I recommend that you approve this ordinance. It is time for Sparks to join the 21st century and recognize the benefits of well-planned urban agriculture. Greater percentages of our population are moving to our cities every year. Urban agriculture is not an ideology, it is a reality to ensure the physical and the social health of our communities. The color green is a prominent color in the logo for the city of Sparks. Your citizens offer you the opportunity to make Sparks a greener place. Thank you.
Thanks, Hen. Renee Peddierse. Pardon me? Yeah, I wasn't even close, were they? Welcome, Renee, Renee was right, right? All right, good, you got to remember I'm Italian, okay, so, you got to give me a break.
Hi, my name is Renee Peters, and my family and I bought two houses in Sparks, as of May. And as someone had mentioned at the last meeting, they had called Washoe County and been told that it was okay to have chickens here, we were too. And I'm not going to lie to you and tell you that's the entire reason we bought property in Sparks, but it definitely was one. Yeah, we were really looking forward to it. And to find out that that wasn't exactly true, we kind of felt a little hoodwinked, to be real honest with you. Anyway, about me personally, I have worked all my life, my adult life and my teenage years with animals. I've worked with San Francisco Animal Care and Control, I've worked with San Francisco SPCA, I've worked with Sonoma County Humane Society, I've worked in animal shelters, I've worked with animal control, and I've worked in veterinary hospitals. The reason that I'm bringing this up is, people are worried about, everything we've talked about here, flies, noise, rotting chickens, roosters crowing, all that fun stuff. We already have the infrastructure in place to deal with nuisance animals, I've had the honor and privilege of working with Bob Gutierrez and Bob Jimenez, who respectively helped write animal control charters for the city of San Francisco and the state of California. And the state of Nevada has the infrastructure already to deal with nuisance animals, it needs some fine tuning to switch it over to chickens, but it's already there. And everybody in this room, I'm sure, has at least one neighbor, if you're lucky, you only have one, with the nuisance dogs running around the neighborhood, barking 28 hours a day, all that fun stuff, or the lady with the 80 cats who are singing love songs on your back porch at 3:00 in the morning, or knocking over your garbage can, or leaving you presents in your vegetable garden.
That's the next issue we're going to be talking about.
Yeah, so, so, but we have, we have it already in place on how to deal with nuisance animals, and that's on a case-by-case basis. So I would ask that we do that with chickens, too. We allow the chickens, see how it goes, and if a neighbor has a problem, it'll be by complaint. But, in my opinion, we already have the infrastructure to deal with it, so, thank you. And I am adamantly for chickens.
Thank you, Renee. Jessie Taylor, Jessie? Welcome.
The name is Jessie Taylor. I am new to Sparks and new to Nevada, I'm from Ohio. In Ohio, in Cleveland, they cleaned up a lot of garbage pits by putting in community gardens. Somebody that's going to plant a garden is going to keep it up, because you put in a lot, during a drought, you've got to be kidding to say no to this. And an animal next door to you, whether it's a chicken, a dog, or whatever, if it's given a name, it's not going to be et. So if somebody wants to raise five chickens, it takes a lot of work, you got to go, you got to gather the eggs, you got to clean. Somebody is putting love, and there will be some that won't take care of them. That's why you guys are making the rules. All the people are doing is a little freedom, which is what Nevada is famous for. You guys make the boundaries, and let those people that are going to put in all the hard work, get on with doing that, and get on with love. Thank you for giving them a chance, you have a great day.
Thanks, Jessie. Okay, that's the last card, I have, anyone else want to speak under Agenda Item 11.1? Last chance, okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action. Any more questions for Mr. Rundle or staff? Ms. Ratty?
So, I think, so the only thing that I've heard so far in discussion that, I think we got to a place with the smallest lots of, I think there's enough safety in place with all the different rules around five-feet setbacks and yards and things, that that's not too big of a concern. It's the enforcement question that was brought up, that I think that is the piece that folks are wondering about. So I would be interested in staff's interest in working with Washoe County Animal Services to define the boundaries around that, and of course, Washoe County Animal Services And of course, if Washoe County Animal Services is willing to do enforcement, then I think that we could revisit the codes to say as much, to say that's true. I know, of course, that Washoe County allows for chickens and Reno allows for chickens. So, this has been solved, not just in some wonderful far-off place like in Ohio, but it's been solved right next door. And so, what I would be looking for is hopefully moving this forward, because it has been four years since, and I appreciate Mr. Hollis giving me credit for bringing it forward, but it wasn't actually me. It was a citizen from Sparks who wanted to have chickens and has been incredibly patient, but it's taken four years to get to the point of actually being able to move on it. So, I would err on the side of, let's go ahead and move forward, and we can enforce it until, with the rules that are on the books, because I just don't think that the risk is that large. And then have an opportunity to start some dialogue with Washoe County about, can we clarify the enforcement? And in the best-case scenario, can Washoe County Animal Services provide the enforcement? Because it sounds like they are providing it for at least themselves and maybe for Reno as well. So, that's my comments so far.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
Along the lines of enforcement, that's my major concern. I mean, I've been dealing with some bad actors in my ward that are running illegal businesses out of there, and basically have thumbed their nose at us every time. And to the one point where they did a sting operation on one of the guys, and he just pled it down to a misdemeanor, and he continues to do his illegal business out of his home and disrupt the rest of the neighbors. Those are the guys I'm concerned with. These folks I'm not concerned with. These folks I know are going to be great pet owners and do all the right things. But how do we deal with the one bad actor, or the two bad actors, or the three that are, you know, raising chickens to slaughter and sell? I mean, there's going to be that kind of a person, sure as heck, as I'm sitting here. There will be that kind of person out there doing it. So, for me, I'm not as inclined to pass it and worry about enforcement later. I'm inclined to, let's figure out how it's going to be enforced first. And the lady who has chickens now, please don't get rid of your chickens, ma'am. Because I think, you know, you're doing the right thing. You guys aren't the ones I'm worried about. It's those one or two or three bad actors that are going to, that gives everybody a bad name. So, for me, I just need a little more clarity. And I know that we, as a city of Sparks, we can't go in someone's backyard until we have permission. And if you're a bad actor and you get 24 hours notice, and you push that off a couple of more days, and you have 25 chickens in your yard and move them over to your cousin's house for two days, and then you bring them all back, and then you start slaughtering chickens again, those are the guys I'm worried about. These folks are not people that I'm worried about at all. So, how do we, how do we take care of that? And is it going to be on Sparks? Is it going to be on Washoe County? And is Washoe County going to respond if we call?
Councilman Lawson, our monitor and city planner, certainly we could, here as part of what you adopt today, if you choose to adopt something, be more specific with regard to the language and G, for example. We could, for example, specify that it would be written notice would be provided, and it would be in a particular form, for example, in the form of a notice left on the front door of the property. Maybe that addresses Councilman Schmitz, or at least part of Councilman Schmitz's concern? You're raising a separate issue in terms of, or a different issue in terms of the bad actor, if you will. Or maybe, you know, if that's a concern of the council, this could in fact be written to specify that upon complaint, that basically the, as a privilege of keeping chickens, that, you know, there will be immediate inspection allowed as soon as, you know, we can get a hold of the property owner?
I might agree to that more readily, because I think that that gives that guy a chance to make changes for 24 hours and go right back to his bad behavior.
The, you know, beyond that, you know, we would have to really handle this the way we would handle any other code enforcement complaint. And, you know, if someone is in violation of the provisions of this portion of the code, we would go down the code enforcement process, you know, through the steps. And, you know, you're right. I mean, you know, we have limited ability to force someone out of business if they're in fact operating this as a business. So, I probably can't give you all the reassurance you're looking for this afternoon on that point, but that would, you know, we would utilize our code enforcement process.
Well, I think if we take over the code enforcement portion of it, we're now dipping over into the other side of regional animal services.
Well, I think-
There's all the things that still bring up big questions in my mind. And it, you know, is SPD going to say, hey, we don't handle dogs or cats, but we will take care of chickens? I mean, where's the line? It's a lot of gray area here for me.
Well, certainly, certainly, you know, by incorporating this provision that allows someone to keep chickens on their property, subject to these particulars, this particular set of standards, my presumption would be, until we determine otherwise, is that we, the city of Sparks, are responsible for enforcing what is in fact our code.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, and if I, Councilwoman Ratty and Councilman Lawson, maybe I can go ahead and move this discussion into some of the things that I think we can do to elevate this whole thing to a professional, professional process. And so, I hope to make some suggestions that will take care of both those items for the time being. Here's my concern. First off, you know, I'm for the ordinance, okay? I think that, you know, as time has come, we talk about time of the future, anything else like that, I necessarily don't have a problem with the ordinance, the concept of the ordinance, and what to do. You know, I'm looking at chicken coops for the last three months myself, and haven't bought one, because I don't want to put it in my backyard if somebody says I have chickens. And then I, as a councilperson, I'm in violation of an ordinance, and, you know, that's a conflict of interest. So, you know, I just kind of, kind of been holding on off, you know, but both my kids have chickens in their yard, so I do, you know, one lives in Reno, one lives in Washoe County, not city of Sparks. They're not violating the city of Sparks laws. But my concern is that tomorrow's headlines in the paper is going to be, "The city of Sparks approves chickens in residential lots," when in reality, we're not doing that. We're very specific to a general area, which is probably a third of the city of Sparks, two-thirds of it. We are not going to allow chickens, because it's out of our jurisdiction. We've got the books, the PDs, the homeowner association, all the various reasons why. Most of that map, the city of Sparks, is white and not colored. And that's why I talked about the business license for the agricultural end of it. And, you know, they're doing the right thing. You know, they are taking blight at property and doing agriculture. I don't want to see the city profiting from something that's trying to do a good code thing. Nor do I want to profit from a homeowner if we ask a homeowner, "We would like you to pull a business license for this, be no cost to you." Here in a few months, probably can be done online, does not have to be done, you know, go down to the city hall. So, that person who's in Wingfield Springs applies for a business license, that would be rejected because of this, this, and this. You don't, you can't do that there. You know, you could stop the process. These poor folks who have called Washoe County and said, and I don't want to put Washoe County responsible for our animal control, because they really haven't proved to me that they have the best interest of our citizens in mind at this point. But how do we, how do we go ahead and be able to get to that process? You know, we have to teach Washoe County first what the process is. But somebody who, like, you know, Mr. Lawson said, the average homeowner was doing the right thing. Get online, do their permit, you know, you know it's good. That's a trigger point for code enforcement. If they go into a neighborhood, they know that that permit's been pulled by that person. They know that they can have five chickens. If they go to that home and there's no permit been pulled, you know, then they're operating a business without a license. We can now enter into business laws and not just code enforcement laws. We can go ahead and enforce, if I'm correct with the city attorney, we can enforce different laws there. So, moving this to a professional level, obviously, it's going to take a few extra minutes or whatever time it takes for the homeowner to do that. It'll be an education process, but it gives us a vehicle to say, hey, look, you know, we're trying to, we want to work with you, work with us a little bit, we want to go ahead and do this. If someone comes into the city of Sparks and, or wants to buy a house and go in and try to pull up that permit, and it says you live in Deandre, you can't have here, it's not our issue. It's not something we can do. I think it, I think it sends volumes of communication around to people, and I think we can lift this whole thing on up. And then, when it comes to Councilman Lawson's, you know, we're not dealing with the code enforcement now, we're dealing with a violation of a business license. And I think that opens up a lot more possibilities for us to be able to do enforcement action than just the code enforcement. So, I have no problem with the square footage of land, because I think it's all estimates at this point, and everybody can, you know, we're going to, we're going to work our way through that. I have a problem with the enforcement issue and trying to go ahead and deal with this issue. And I would propose that you've got already, the agriculture, you're going to ask them, because it's a zoning issue, you're going to ask for a business license to be pulled. I think we can do the same thing for this and make it, make it a very simple process. And again, I get back down to, if you're doing the right thing, I don't want the city to profit off from it. You know, I mean, we can probably retake a look at it a couple of years, and if we have a whole lot of code enforcement issues, then yeah, it's going to be a $20 a year, because we've got to pay for code enforcement officers to deal. It's a problem. Let's work with a way to go ahead and deal with this in the meantime. And that's just what I, what I'd like to see the changes made within the, within the code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think on the, what Councilman Lawson's concern about inspections is clarified here for me, because when property owners exercise the privilege of keeping chickens, they're agreeing to the fact that the city, the administrator, city manager, or someone from the city can go in and inspect that property. So, if there are violations, because we discussed, you know, the legal, you know, can we go in and just legally without a, you know, search warrant, go into someone's home? They've agreed to that by the fact that they are allowed to have the chickens. So, I think the ability to enforce and, you know, compliance with the articles we have in here is already written into what you've done for us. I really kind of, the way it's written right here, it's the city, whether that's the business license side or code enforcement. Right now, how this is written, it's the city taking on that responsibility for enforcement, which I don't have a problem with, but I am the piece of Washoe County Animal Services, because it is animals. I guess I would like to see how we, how we interact or how that complies with and works with Washoe County Animal Services. Or do we strictly look at this as code enforcement and as business license and keep it within the city, where we have, you know, where we oversee that as long as we're not in conflict with the animal services? And I don't know if they do bees. I mean, you know, the city attorney mentioned birds, but not bees. But I see this right now as the way we have some protections in here. And we would be, if we approved this, it would be with us, you know, maintaining the responsibility for enforcement. But I think the enforcement piece is really important, and I think the ability for us to enforce that upon complaints, like the rest of our code enforcement or business license are, that we have the ability, if there are issues, to address it. But I think, unlike, you know, what Councilman Lawson is saying, you know, you're going to have, I mean, no matter what we're doing in the city, there are going to be people who abuse the system, who don't follow the rules, who don't think they have to, who work around it. And you just have to deal with those in a case-by-case, but I don't think you penalize the majority of people that we're not going to have issues with, in my opinion, on anything we decide. I think we deal with ones that are a problem, and for the general population, especially the people we've heard from, I don't see that as being the issue, and that does not concern me.
I'm going to make my comments before Mr. Schmidt. It's okay, I haven't said anything. I don't have a problem with the ordinance. And as I look in the audience out here, as we're discussing who's going to do this and who's going to do that, I see people shaking their hands. They don't care. We can work that out. If we think this is the right thing to do, then let's approve it because of the people that are going to follow the rules and do the right thing. 99%? Too many times in government, we make a decision based on the 2% idiots that don't do the right thing, instead of making a decision on the 98% people, the ones that are here, that are going to do this right. So, you know, I'm a little more of a throw caution to the wind kind of a guy, I guess, but these people out here, I'm telling you, they don't care who knocks on the bad guy's door. It's not going to be theirs, they're not going to be knocking on their door. So, they don't care about that. You know, those are problems that, those are our problems as a city. They're not our constituents' problems. So, if you think this is a good thing to do, let's approve it, and then we'll figure these things out. I mean, 98% of the people are going to comply, and it won't be a problem. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I came here today thinking, no, no way on chickens.
And I just told Julie I give. I give. So, when there's good arguments, we can change our minds. So, I'm for chickens all the way now.
Ms. Ratty?
I love chicken.
So, with that, I hear the concerns. I have had a shift since my first comments. Okay, let's keep it in Sparks, and let's manage it in Sparks through our code enforcement process, as opposed to reaching out to animal services for at least the first year, because then we're going to have a little bit, we'll have our finger on the pulse a little bit more to see how it's going. Again, I think the risk is relatively minimal, while there may be large-scale chicken rackets out there and people trying to-
That's arms. Exactly, yeah.
Trying to, you know, and I agree, there's probably 2% bad players, but I think it's time to move forward, and I think we can monitor it for a year. And if it doesn't work the way it's written, then we have the power to bring it back and to make some modifications to make it work. And so, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I move to adopt Bill Number 2694, Amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to Include Standards for Urban Agriculture and Other Matters Properly Relating thereto, to include the amendment presented by Mr. Rundle earlier during discussion that clarifies the zoning codes where chickens are allowed.
SF Oops? Where'd you go?
And urban agriculture.
Put it back up, SF MF, whatever it was.
Yeah, it's the Comprehensive Urban Agriculture Zoning Amendment.
Yeah, SF MF. Well, you can see it there, I can't read it.
Amendment 20.03A dot 1.
Okay, Ms. Byby?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Ms. Byby, to approve the chicken ordinance, chicken and bees. Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Ms. Schmidt, I want to make sure I didn't hear anything on code enforcement. Is it, you're directing code enforcement to be the lead on this?
For clarity, I'm approving it as written, and that keeps it within our code enforcement process.
Okay, and then I just want to make sure that legally, that we're not interrupting our 12-year agreement with Washoe County, that, you know, we're not interjecting ourselves into an agreement that can jeopardize a whole lot of things. This is a $750,000 a year agreement we have. Taxpayers have approved this, and I just want to make sure legally we can do this.
Legally, you can do this through your zoning powers.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, we're the Sparks City Council, we can do this. Come on. Mr. Lawson?
Well, I want to let you know, I'm going to go along with this. I had no problem with chickens and agriculture and bees and all that. My, is the bad actor, and I'll be the one that'll be monitoring that and making sure that we have some teeth to our ordinance, so that people that want to have chickens can have them, and those that are taken advantage don't get to.
So, if this is approved, let me warn you people out there that are watching. If you mess up, this guy right over here, 6'5", 240 maybe, is going to come to your door. So, I don't think you want to see him. So, be careful.
Be careful.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, yeah, Charlie. Please vote. Pass generously. All right, great, you know, wonderful, you guys. And this, you know, all I expect out of this is a dozen fresh eggs a week. So, that was not on the record, because I don't want to, I don't want to go to jail for that, so don't bring me any eggs, please. Anyway, thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. It was a very civil discussion. That's the way government should be. Thank you. So, we're going to be adjourned now until 6:00 PM, when we talk about cats. So, we're gonna be adjourned now until 6:00 PM when we talk about cats.
Hello and welcome to Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry. Our first segment is about a swift water rescue drill. It's a story about saving lives. Emergencies can take many forms. The Sparks Fire Department trains and maintains three technical teams whose members receive additional training in a specific area of need. This is the wet team or water entry team. Recently, the Sparks Fire Department participated in a drill designed to increase the communication skills needed to coordinate rescue in the water from operation on shore. This real-world exercise integrates engine companies and rescue swimmers to improve communication, which is the key to successful rescue operations.
Communications is very important for us and coordination between engine companies. We've, in the past, we've done a lot of drills with the swimmers. We do a lot of training together, and all the swimmers are excellent at what they do, but we haven't done the coordination with the engine companies and the command structure. And so, this is kind of an integration drill based on communications and, and the integration of all the parties involved for rescue.
We need two medic units, one, Lindell Bridge, we've got one victim in medical attention, also send one more emergency unit down the Rock Park.
The department maintains three inflatable boats for rescue operations. Sparks Fire responds to water emergencies in the Truckee River, Sparks Marina Park, and other bodies of water.
The first thing we'll do if we get a call for the river is that we will, the incident commander will pull out a binder that we have that gives flow rates and times on, on victims or people in the river. And we could, by that, we can decide where to set our downstream containment, which is the furthest point that they could possibly have gone in the river based on the water flow. And that closes off our box, we call it. And so, we don't have to worry about, from that point downstream, they couldn't possibly be there, so it's less that we have to search. And from that point, we will, we'll start our bank search to, to locate all the victims we have. The river that we have here has a lot of gradients, and that's defined as a lot of feet per mile that it goes down. So we have a quick-moving river, not a huge amount of water flowing, and so we have a fast, shallow river that's very rocky. And the danger there is, obviously, you're traveling with the water, you can impact the rocks and other things that are in the river that cause injury. But a lot of people think because it's so shallow that they can just stand up and walk out of the river. And that's, that's one of the worst ideas. You just don't wanna do that. By putting your feet down, they can get wedged underneath rocks. We call that a foot entrapment, and it can actually break your leg, and you'll be still stuck there dangling off a broken leg in the river. And it's, it's a, it's a real hazard with our river. First of all, don't swim without other people there. You don't wanna just come down to the river by yourself and go swimming. That's just, that's just a bad idea. With our water temperatures that we have, hypothermia is a real possibility and, and something that can set in really quick. So, don't swim alone. If you are gonna swim, wear a PFD, a personal flotation device or a life jacket. It just helps you out if you do get hypothermic. You start losing your, your motor functions and, and you need to have the ability to be able to float so you can gather your thoughts. And then, swim, don't stand and walk. Swim to the shore and, and make sure that you've stopped moving before you put your feet down.
Sparks Fire has two other special teams. The technical team is trained in high-angle confined space and trench rescue. Hazardous materials team is trained in fighting chemical and industrial fires. Sparks City Fire works closely with local and regional fire departments.
Long before the water starts to rise, the city of Sparks has taken significant preparations to protect people and property from flooding. The North Truckee Drain Project is a critical piece of the overall regional Truckee River flood project.
Anyway, just a few short remarks from me. I'm, I'm so pleased. I've lived here for 68 years, and it's hard for me to do the math. Because in 68 years, we've had six 100-year flood projects, floods. So, I think I look pretty good for 600 years old.
A $35 million flood project is underway to protect businesses in the Sparks industrial area. Phase one is realigning the North Truckee Drain, moving the water outlet downstream of Steamboat Creek. Engineers expect this to significantly lower flooding levels and backwater breakouts in the Sparks industrial area.
It's all gonna be pretty much covered up. The, the box, it will be constructed, it will be under the roadway we're in right now with an outfall that will go out to the river.
Back in January 1997, the area was hard hit. Floodwaters doing damage to businesses throughout the 2,100-acre area. About 25,000 people work here. The industrial area is the low spot in the valley, forming a natural drain. In fact, storm water from as far north as Spanish Springs flows into the North Truckee Drain. Making this area safe from floodwaters has been a longtime goal of city leaders.
Yeah, it's been a mission for me since I got on the council in 1999. Like I said, I've been through six floods, a couple in the 50s when I was a young boy, one in '64, one in '86, one in '96, and one in 2000, '97, and one in 2006. So, it's very personal to me. I lived on a ranch about three-quarters of a mile, mile away from where we're standing. And our ranch got flooded several times, and like I said, it's very personal to me, and I'm enjoying watching this happen.
And you know, while I'm at it, I might as well thank all the property owners around here. It took a lot of work from our staff to get them together so we can get the right-of-way that we needed to do this project and work with us on not closing the road completely, which would hurt their business. And we've done that with the Southeast Connector also. The overall project is $35 million, like I mentioned a minute ago. This project is, is, God, it's so, it's so needed for this whole area. If we flood again, we'll lose everybody in this district and they may not come back.
They're currently using a forming and shoring system that is, it's been around for quite a while, but Q and D took it another step in utilizing I-beam for cross-members and utilizing a forming system that's, it's called a traveler, which will just, it just kinda like moves forward and moves along. Saves an incredible amount of time, and time, of course, is money. And it's, you know, the excavation is the excavation. However, when they have to put the shoring system together and move it forward, that's what, that's where the money's at, is the shoring system and the, and the forming system.
This drain project is a critical component of the regional Truckee River flood project. Phase one costs $12 million and is partly funded by the city of Sparks. That's the $5.41 our citizens see on their sewer bills. That work right here. $4.7 million comes from the Truckee River flood authority. Phase one will take a year. The entire drain realignment should be done in 2019.
So let me finally just mention the staff of Sparks. These guys have done a fabulous job in getting this project ready, getting it built.
Sean Carey grew up in the city of Sparks, served the city for 21 years, and was the city manager of Sparks for 14 years. We're grateful for his service and his dedication to the residents of our city. He retired in April 2014.
While his presence will be missed here at City Hall, his legacy will remain visible on the city skyline.
Well, I changed to civil engineering, and that's what drew me into the infrastructure that cities run on. And so much of what people take for granted every day is really behind the scenes. They don't see what's inside the traffic signals, the cabinets, the pipes under the ground. And civil engineering really provides all that stuff. I often say the civil stands for civilization, and I think a lot of these professionals give them an opportunity to use the science of engineering in a manner of art to make sure that we craft a community that's really, has great infrastructure, great parks, great roads, and it's really a pretty special place to me.
Carey served the city he loved for 21 years and helped shape Sparks to the city that we know today. Carey's long and distinguished public service career included work as a civil engineer, a traffic engineer, public works director, assistant city manager, and of course, city manager for 14 years.
Got into the first use of computers while in CR Vista and developed a system to time traffic lights using a modem. And folks may not even know what a modem is today, but we were thrilled to have a, an IBM PC XT that was able to communicate over telephone wires and get traffic signals to work in a sequence. It was, it was quite an innovation. And that took me off to Boulder, Colorado, where I became a traffic engineer. And that three years of my life led me to want to become a director of public works, which is the person who runs the infrastructure department for any organization. And I really enjoyed that role, and I call myself a recovering traffic engineer from my experiences in Boulder. But being a public works director is, has been a very rewarding part of my life. Really enjoyed the opportunities here in Sparks, working with a great team.
Carey grew up in Sparks, attending Delworth Middle School and graduating from Sparks High School.
And used to make my way in the ninth grade as Sparks, ninth grade, to go to Sparks High School every day. And I would walk by this building, which was then painted blue, as it is, is today, it's white. And I've always wondered what went on in that building. And as my career went on, I became an engineering intern at the city of Reno. And that's where I got my kinda calling into government service. Got a degree in civil engineering and then worked in three other governments before getting an opportunity to come back to the city of Sparks as the public works director in the early 1990s. So I guess for a kid who grew up here and walked down Prater Way, I've now found out what goes on in this building.
Carey proved instrumental in bringing about several improvements to Sparks. Through Carey's leadership, the Sparks Marina, Golden Eagle Regional Park, and the Legends Mall have all become Sparks landmarks.
You know, the job of, of city manager has given me the opportunity to grow. And I think that it's given me an opportunity to be a leader and to bring out the best in some of the people that I've been privileged to work with. And I'm a, I'm a leader of a team. I have a police chief, I have a fire chief, I have a community services director. And we work really well together as a team. We make team decisions and we put what the council is setting as priorities first. So, being able to be leader has been a real thrill over the last 14 years. And being able to focus on outcomes, yes, the day-to-day's gotta work, but you also gotta reach the goals. That's a lot of help.
Steve Driscoll joined the city of Sparks in 1994 as a budget analyst. He became the administrator to Sparks Municipal Court and was later appointed assistant city manager. Then, in March of 2014, Mr. Driscoll was appointed city manager by Sparks Mayor Gino R. Martini and confirmed by the city council.
But having said that, I would like to recommend Steve Driscoll as the manager.
Driscoll is a credentialed member of the International City County Managers Association and a certified government financial manager. He is currently leading a complete review of all city services and programs.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on a learning curve for a little while. I'll have to admit that. There, you know, there are things that, that I know fairly well. There are other things that I've been involved in, but not necessarily, you know, at the decision-making process, but I've helped formulate a lot of those. And then there'll be some things that just really haven't been on my plate at this point, and, and I'll get up to speed. I've got a phenomenal staff. The city of Sparks is blessed with great people, and so those people are already providing information, and they're getting me up to speed, and I'm kinda back to school.
Prior to his work in local government, Driscoll held management positions in national companies in the area of retail, manufacturing, and technology sectors. Mr. Driscoll is a fourth-generation Nevadaan. He graduated from the University of Nevada Reno with a degree in accounting and holds a master's in business administration from the University of Phoenix.
So, just what does a city manager do? Well, let's go behind the scenes here at City Hall to find out.
The city of Sparks has a council manager form of government. That means that the mayor and city council make policy decisions, which the city manager and his staff then implement. The mayor and five council members are elected in staggered four-year terms. The city manager has direct oversight over the police department, fire department, community services department, the parks and recreation department, and the financial services department. The manager's office is also responsible for providing the public with important annual reports such as the state of the city, the annual fiscal report, and the city's strategic plan. To see these reports or to learn more about the city manager's office, visit us online. Which ward do you live in? Check out the current ward map. If you'd like to contact your council member, the mayor, or the city manager, you can call 353-2311, or go to cityofsparks.us. Click on the city council page, and you'll find links to email each of your city officials. The Sparks City Council meets the second and fourth Monday of each month at 2:00 PM in the city's legislative building at 7:45, 4th Street, next to City Hall at 431 Prater Way.
As many of you know, we've been working for years to bring a state-of-the-art IMAX theater to the outlets at Legends and to Sparks. Finally, with the help of our friends such as Darth Vader, Batman, and Snow White over here, we've been able to get things going. So it's very exciting to be here today to see construction begin.
Northern Nevada's first true IMAX theater has been a hot spot since opening night.
Well, you know, this is just something we've been waiting for, for years. It's, it's always been one of the hinge pins of the center. You know, it was never one of the, it was never the retail or, or never the, the, the big box or the outlets. It's always been the pieces of the puzzle that come together. This is a big one for us. We're so excited. It's been accepted by the community and by the market. Traffic is stronger than we ever anticipated. Our restaurants are benefiting from it, the retailers are benefiting from it. This mall has a different feel on Friday and Saturday nights than it's ever had before. And from my position, that's great.
The Galaxy Luxury Theater boasts a 75-foot IMAX screen with 3D viewing. Oh, and the sound system that will blow you away. There's no place like it anywhere in the Truckee Meadows.
Besides the IMAX concept, which you, you see in other markets across the United States, we have the Galaxy Plus concept. It's, it's just a unique way to watch a movie theater.
The luxury start by not having to wait in box office lines.
The new Galaxy Theater in Sparks is great. It's a new concept. You can even pick your own seats, and you don't have to sit through all the previews. I'm gonna sit right there. Thank you, Tia.
Thank you, Tia.
So check out the push-button, full-reclining power seats equipped with a footrest. You will not want to miss out and you will not want to get up when the credits start to roll.
Well, we thought that the greater Reno market needed a little competition and a little shaking up. And so we're very pleased to find an opportunity at the Legends Shopping Center in Sparks. This is the number-one center in northern Nevada, and we want to be a part of it. And then our other auditoriums feature power reclining chairs with footrests and, which are equivalent to a nice lounge chair that you might have in your den at home. And so you can settle into one of those chairs, enjoy one of our beers on tap, have a glass of wine or a margarita. And it adds another element to the movies.
We're going to see that Tram Pornomers.
I like entertainment. And the best forms of entertainment, as far as I'm concerned, is a lot of good eye candy. And that's what you get right here. The chairs are great. I mean, a city, you can't beat it. So I love it.
This one in particular, I really enjoy it, just how organized it is. I can pick my seats out hours before and get here when the movie's actually starting. And I still have the best seats.
I liked how you can recline a seat because I just didn't feel that I'd been to actually does it. You hit by hitting the back button right here.
The reclining chairs are really nice, especially in this theater. It's super comfy. So yeah, we come as often as we can.
And don't forget, when you shop and play in Sparks, your tax money helps support your city services. Progress is being made on the economic front here in the city of Sparks. Here's a quick update on the 2014 State of the City address by Mayor Martini. The economy is still recovering. But Sparks Mayor Gino Martini has a positive outlook going forward. The mayor's recent State of the City address acknowledged the problems the city has experienced during the economic downturn. But his optimism comes from seeing how the city has handled the crisis.
Well, I think the main points that the State of the City address was about is that we're not out of the woods yet. You know, things are getting better. They're kind of stabilizing. Things are kind of flat-lined. Some things are increasing a little bit. But we still have problems with revenues not, or expenses outpacing our revenues. So we need to work on that. We're still going to have to make some cuts this year to the tune of about $1,000, 1.9 million, which we're looking to do. So it's always a battle between revenues and expenses. And you know, we cut as much as we can and work it that way. But again, we're looking maybe to enhance the revenue some way. And the second part is, you know, we're, like I said, we're not out of the woods, but we're going in the right direction. Things are getting better. Development's starting to pick up. We're getting some new stores coming into the city. Sales tax revenues are getting better. They're increasing. So it's going, things are moving in the right direction.
Well, the council has a strategic plan that's been approved. And we have an active budget. And so our job will be to look at those plans, modify them if they need to be, and then just drive towards completion of those projects. So we have a pretty good roadmap for us right now. And of course, we'll make changes as needed.
You know, people are getting to the point where they're going to be, where they're interested in coming to Sparks because they're hearing about the new facilities, new restaurants and things that we're getting in here. And the restaurants are doing well. Perhaps some of the properties are doing well. So more and more, I hear that we're getting on the radar screen of people that want to move to this area and probably open up something in Sparks.
With the sale of the iconic John Esquaga's Nugget, the Sparks mayor and city council honor the Esquaga family with a proclamation. John Esquaga and Family Day honors their significant contributions to our local economy.
Philanthropic generosity of the Esquaga family has significantly benefited the Sparks community and the Truckee Meadows. And whereas the Nugget has grown and prospered into the city's landmark resort casino and is Sparks's skyscraper icon and has raised the geographical location of our city. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 24th, 2014, as John Esquaga and Family Day.
It's a real compliment. Pretty proud of being recognized after 59 years. My entire livelihood in the last 59 been in this city. And to see it grow like it has, it's really a great tribute to what we were able to accomplish.
Thanks for watching this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Don't forget to follow us on Facebook and Twitter and download our mobile application, found at the Google Play Store and the App Store. I'm Adam Mayberry. Thanks for watching.